Now it is. It was not your crime.
Yeah, but we can hear you.
Oh, okay. Great. Good evening, everyone. The meeting will now come to order. Hello, I'm Donna Stavigni, President of the Board of Education, and I would like to welcome you to the November 13th, 2019 Board Meeting. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on the CCPS website at www.carolsprings.org and broadcast live on Channel 21. We are also recording this meeting so that it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. We would like to remind you that because this is a live broadcast, anyone who participates in the meeting needs to use a microphone. Later in the meeting, time will be provided for citizens to address the Board regarding topics on the agenda or other items of concern, except for items relating to personnel. Persons wishing to address the Board should fill out a blue card located on the table near the entrance to this room and pass it to the Superintendent or the Board President prior to the conclusion of the scheduled citizen participation. Now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence, and then the National Anthem.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I would really like to thank Nick Naomen, and he is here with us this evening. That was an amazing rendition of "The Star-Spangled Banner."
Good job, Nick.
Nice job, Nick. Thank you so much for being here. And Nick is also accompanied-- and Nick is also accompanied tonight by our Principal at Carroll Springs, Gretchen Rockefeller. So thank you all for being here. And his mom. Thank you so much for that.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
And I heard that Nick also did that at an Orioles game recently. Is that correct?
It is. His teacher helped teach it to him, and he sang it for the opening of the Baltimore Orioles game last summer.
Yep.
That's fantastic.
And he knocked it out of the park, literally. There wasn't a drawing.
I was definitely getting choked up.
Appreciate you being here. Thanks, Nick. Nice job.
Thank you. Okay, Board Members. I need a motion for the approval of the agenda. Moved by Dr. Dorsey, seconded by Mr. Kyler. Board Members, do we have any discussions on the agenda? Yep? Okay. All those in favor? It passes unanimously. Thank you. So we'll move on for the approval of the minutes. Board Members, do I have a motion to approve the unapproved October 16th, 2019 Work Session Meeting Minutes for Food Service Discussion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Pataglia.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kyler. Board Members, any comments or revisions? No? Okay. All those in favor? It passes unanimously. Thank you. Now, we need a motion to approve the unapproved Board Meeting Minutes for October 16th, 2019.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Kyler.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Pataglia. Board Members, any comments or revisions? No? Okay. Then I call for the vote. All those in favor? It passes unanimously. Thank you. And now we can move on to the Carroll County Student Government Report.
Hello, everyone. My name is Grace Johnson. I'm the current CCSGA President, and I'm so excited to share the progress that CCSGA has made over the past few weeks. On Thursday, November 7th, CCSGA held an Officer Team Meeting at Central Office. At this meeting, we debriefed the Leadership Summit that was held on September 27th and started making preliminary plans as to how we can improve it for next year. We also started planning for our December General Assembly Meeting. This GA will have a service-based theme, and workshops will include making Project Linus blankets, team building, and public speaking. This is always a very exciting and fun GA, and we are-- and all are welcome to join in for this festive meeting. It will be on December 7th at Francis Scott Key High School, and I'll have more details for you on our December GA during my December Board Report. Our next Officer Team Meeting is scheduled for December 3rd, and we will be doing a lot more planning at that meeting. CCSGA is also participating in several upcoming Maryland Association of Student Councils and national events. First, we have many students going to the LEED Conference this coming weekend. This is a national conference, and this year it's being held in Crystal City, Virginia. This is the first year CCSGA will be sending representatives. Next weekend, we have several students attending the Maryland Association of Student Councils Fall Leadership Conference, including four students from Liberty High School, which will be workshop presenters. And we are very excited to be involved in both of these upcoming events, and we look forward to building our leadership skills with students from across the state and the nation. Thank you for letting me share our progress with you. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Okay. And with that, we will move on to the PIE III Plaque Presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Sure. Board Members, Superintendent Lockard, Commissioner Weaver. In the spirit of Pillar Two, we know that community engagement is a large piece of the puzzle of education. Tonight, I am thrilled to be here, standing in front of you, with Rose Young, who is one of our Directors of PIE Cubed, which has been one of our partners over the past several years. Later on this evening, you are going to actually hear a presentation that we're going to be sharing in regards to our robotics league that we've started across the county. But before that, Ms. Young has a few words she'd like to share with you, and if the members of the Board wouldn't mind coming around to the front, there's going to be a presentation of a plaque to you all, please.
We actually have two plaques. We will present one to the Board and one to the Superintendent. And this is on behalf of the RoboLions First Robotics Competition Team 2199. I have two members here, Isaiah and Ben, who will make the presentation. We are pleased to acknowledge our ongoing partnership with Carroll County Public Schools. Our partnership has resulted in the growth of community and now school-based teams in the region. For the past three years, our partnership has resulted in funding from the Maryland State Department of Education for robotics and STEM activities, and we look forward to a continuation of that sort of cooperation. The support of the Superintendent and the Board in enabling more students in CCPS schools to experience the benefits that we have all enjoyed, while members of the RoboLions have-- is very much appreciated by all of our team members and by our family of teams also represented here today from around the county. This little token of appreciation is presented to you today along with an invitation to join hundreds of robotics team members on December 14th at the Roar of the Robots, an event we have been hosting since 2009. This will be the first time that all of the teams at this First LEGO League Event and First LEGO League Junior Expo, all of the First LEGO League teams, 27 of them, will be from Carroll County. And so that's a really-- that's the biggest event we've hosted, and it's the first time all of the teams have been local teams. We really hope for a fantastic turnout, and I know some of you are already planning to join us. I've left a bright orange paper in the back for those others who might be interested who haven't heard about it yet, about that event, and also other events that these teams and the RoboLions will be competing in from January-- well, from December, actually, through March of next year. And thank you very much for everything that you've done. I'm looking forward to hearing Jason's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Squeeze just a little. All right. All right, that's perfect. Ready? One more. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you so much. Thanks-- thank you so much. That was excellent. All right. Now we'll move on to the Special Awareness Weeks. Dr. Dorsey?
We'll start with American Education Week. Next week, November 18th through 22nd, we will celebrate American Education Week. Parents and members of the community are welcome to visit our schools to experience the learning and activities taking place in the classrooms. We also encourage everyone to visit our website and follow us on Facebook and Twitter to see some of these activities and to stay informed about our schools. So thanks to all of our dedicated teachers and support staff who are committed to providing our students with the best possible education.
Thank you, Dr. Dorsey. And Ms. Pataglia?
This week has been designated as School Psychology Awareness Week. This year's theme is Find Your Focus. Thanks to all of our school psychologists for helping our students focus on setting goals, identifying their action steps, communicating needs, and engaging in discussions that help create the connections necessary to develop critical academic and social emotional skills.
Okay. Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to public participation.
All right. Here we go. To have an orderly presentation of comments by the public, the following guidelines apply. Number one, citizen participation is not intended to be a question-and-answer period. However, if citizens have specific questions, the Superintendent will assign a staff member to make contact during the Board Meeting to arrange a time to respond to questions. Two, the Superintendent Board reserve the right to correct misinformation, presented as factual, after the conclusion of the citizen participation period. Number three, statements of the Board should relate to a recent agenda item, an agenda item that is expected to appear in the near future, or a matter of general policy over which the Board has authority. Personnel matters, pending appeals, the actions or statements of individual staff, or items related to employee negotiations are not appropriate topics and may not be discussed. Number four, it is the intent of the Board to allow all citizens an opportunity to speak. Therefore, the Board has scheduled time on the agenda for citizen participation. The Board reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on a particular topic so that all topics may be addressed. If 30 minutes have passed, and there are citizens who have not addressed the Board, additional time may be allotted later in the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. When the allotted time expires, the speaker is permitted to complete a sentence and return to the audience. The public may not display signs or posters during the Board Meeting. In lieu of signs, or if you are unable to complete your comments in the allotted time, individuals are encouraged to submit remarks to the Board in writing. Our first person tonight is Kelly McDonough.
Good evening, Superintendent Lockard, Commissioner Weaver, Board Members. We have an incredible opportunity right now to elect a teacher to the State Board of Education, one of our own, actually. A CCPS teacher and former Carroll County Teacher of the Year, Rachel McCusker, is running for a position on the State Board of Education, advocating on our behalf and on the behalf of all Carroll County Public School students. Here is the really great news. Anyone at home watching or anyone in this room who possesses a State of Maryland Teaching Certificate is able to vote in this election by going to vote yes elections dot com forward slash MSD. This is the first-ever election for a teacher seat on the State Board of Education. Rachel teaches music here at Linton Springs and is aware of all the issues we face in the state as well as, of course, Carroll County. She'll be a strong voice, but will work to build consensus. We have about 100 more hours during this election, and we can see to it that Maryland State Board of Ed has a teacher's voice and an excellent representation of Carroll County. She was a former Carroll County Teacher of the Year in 1516. So I would encourage anyone who is eligible to vote in that election to do so. That was at vote yes elections dot com forward slash MSD. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our second speaker, Catherine Hen.
Hi. I'm Catherine Hen, a kindergarten teacher at Manchester Elementary School. On behalf of National Kindness Day, I am here tonight to talk to you about being kind to our special educators and the special ed students they teach. Right now, many special educators are still at school, working, and they will take work home with them so that after dinner, dishes, evening activities, bath, and bedtime for their own families, they begin-- they can begin to work some more to meet the needs of their students. Their caseloads are too big. The needs of their many students are not academic needs, but behavior. They are not behavior specialists, but they are performing a job of a behavior specialist. They are also performing the job of a supervisor, supervising the one-on-ones or close adult supervision assistance. They are writing schedules, lesson plans for the assistants. They are directing and training the assistants. They are not supervisors. They are teachers, and they should receive the same respect, and they should receive the same amount of planning time that teachers have to be able to complete their work during their work hours. Their caseloads are too big. With smaller caseloads, maybe they could have their planning time and be able to get their work done during their work hours. However, more important than all of that is their ability to come to work happy, refreshed, and ready to work with their students. Their morale is low. Their energy is gone, and it is only the beginning of the second quarter. Third, our students deserve better. The special educators in this county deserve better. You can help them by adding more special educator positions into the budget. Our children do not need more teachers who will be doing staff development and managing state tests. Please consider using the money that is in the budget for additional academic specialists and hire 18 special educators. Our children, our teachers, and our community cannot wait. The time to fix this problem is now. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Irene Savage, please.
Hello. Forgive me if I'm not going about this correctly because I'm not really sure the correct way to do things. I'm a bus contractor, and I know everybody's talking about next year's budget. My concerns aren't about next year's. My concern's about what's going on right now. I have special needs buses that haul our pre-K students home at lunchtime from the schools that don't go all day, and they take these children home without assistance on their buses. I've asked for assistance for going on the second year now, and I'm told there's no money in the budget. These young'uns are four years old. They have to have an assistant in the classroom, but they send them out to a school bus, anywhere from five to 24-year-olds, and put them behind one adult who has their back turned to them, who cannot see them because the seats are too high. We don't know if they're on the floor. I hear they're throwing things. They're crawling around. They're screaming. We can't ignore them. We're told to ignore our phones. They call out. You cannot ignore these children. I know if there's an accident, I really don't know what we're supposed to do because the way you work on a regular ed bus is you send the older children out first to help with the young children, while you stay in the bus and make sure they all get out. If I have 15 four-year-olds on a bus and I'm in an accident that needs to be offloaded, I really don't want to hand my four-year-olds to a complete stranger on the side of the road, but I cannot get out of the bus while there's still children in the bus. These kids, sometimes we get them home. Their parents aren't there, which leaves my driver sitting on the road, blocking traffic, making phone calls, trying to get ahold of parents, trying to get ahold of the school, calling Transportation to find out what do we do with them. If any of them have-- I just worry about safety of them. We all talk about safety, and I know they did the pilot of the GPS for the safety of the buses. I feel this is a safety issue we can fix right now. If I have a little kid that has an allergic reaction to something and passes out, I will not know it until I get to that stop and the child doesn't come forward to get out-- get off the bus. So I am asking for help now before something does happen because 15, 24-year-olds behind you that don't know the bus rules, that don't have anybody on there to help, is a little much. I personally pay an assistant for the first several weeks to get the kids settled. Kristin Ebert has come out and rode with one of my buses, but that was right after I had an assistant riding with them. And since that time, they're now throwing pencils and books and taking their shoes off and throwing them and hanging upside down in their belts. And if my driver has to keep stopping to get these kids-- they're on the bus for over an hour as it is. So I'm just asking if we can get the money from the budget to put another adult on the pre-K runs to help us just get these children home safely. Thank you.
Thank you, Irene. And that finishes our citizen participation for this time.
Okay. Are there any other blue cards in the room for the moment? No? Okay. Then we will move on to employee groups.
Good evening, Superintendent Lockard, members of the Board of Education and Commissioner Weaver. I am Teresa Basler McCullough, President of the Carroll County Education Association, who represents the dedicated and hard-working teachers, counselors, RNs, speech and language providers, OTs, and PTs who help make our school system one of the best in Maryland. We attended the Carroll delegation session last week and found some of the conversation to be disturbing. Once again, it was bothersome to hear about obligations to fund Baltimore City. I am not diminishing the needs of Baltimore City, and I understand the delegation as a whole has to disperse funds across Maryland. However, the delegation that was present is from Carroll County, who were elected by Carroll County taxpayers. Therefore, the Carroll delegation should retain their loyalties and responsibilities to Carroll County first and foremost when funding is decided during the upcoming legislative session. In addition, we will continue to provide the much-needed education when it comes to Kerwin and the Maryland Blueprint for School Success. And to that account, please save the date for the annual CCEA Legislative Breakfast scheduled for January 4th. Invites are coming your way. It is sad and bothersome to report that our special educators are in crisis mode. The workload and mandated paperwork has gone over and beyond. Planning time is far and few minutes between. Our special educators are working an enormous amount of hours beyond the duty day and on the weekends, which cannot continue. And I know you've heard a lot of this today and before me, but that is-- that is the situation that we're in. These unbelievable job demands are taking a toll on some of our educators' health and well-being. In some cases, marriages and families are being affected. Special educators love their jobs. They love their students, but are exhausted and distraught about their concerns on how they're going to provide the students' needs. And please keep in mind, I haven't even put behavior in the mix. Some of our listeners are probably out there thinking to themselves, "Well, what's changed?" And I'm here to tell you, special education demands are on the rise like never before. This is my 35th year in Carroll County. I have not seen or experienced what my members are feeling and experiencing. We have some saddened special-- We have some saddened special educators, and for the sake of redundancy, I'm going to say, are crying for help, literally. More resources and additional staffing is certainly the answer, and we all know what is required for that: funding to promote success. It's what's best for our educators and our students. We are exceptionally appreciative of the support from our superintendent and chiefs when it came to their remarks at both the Carroll delegation and Town Hall last week about additional funding being needed in special education. We thank you for listening to our concerns and issues in this area, and it is evident in, it is your intent to help improve the jobs and lives of our special educators as you create the budget in the next few weeks. However, I'm going to have to add this, today's work session's strategic prioritization did not reflect the Town Hall's priority activity, but then, the discussion that followed could be favorable. I often hear educators indicating they would love to be shadowed by an elected official to get a taste of what we do day in and day out in our classrooms. Our GO team and Government Relations Committee have designed an activity, Walk a Day in My Shoes. An invite will be sent out to our local officials, Superintendent Lockard, Chief John O'Neill, Chief Cindy McCabe, Chief Jason Anderson, and our Human Resources Director, Shantris Baptist are also being included. And I brought some flyers today, but like I said, you'll be getting one electronically as well. Next week is American Education Week recognition, which is a wonderful opportunity to celebrate public education and honor individuals who are making a difference in ensuring that every child receives a quality education. Thank you, educators, for all your loyalty, dedication, professionalism, and expertise you provide your students daily. I ended my report last month by the remark, let negotiations begin. Negotiations begin tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Deal.
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Lockard, board members, Commissioner Weaver. My name is Diane Deal, and I am the proud president representing Secretary Clericals, LPNs, and Instructional Assistance for Carroll County Public Schools. With the declaration of impasse by both CASE and Carroll County Board of Education, CASE is looking forward to finally sitting down with a mediator to try and reach an agreement that will benefit the Carroll County school system, our students, and the bargaining unit members of CASE. Next week is American Education Week. Our school system recognizes that teachers are the hub of the classroom. CASE thanks them for all their hard work they do for each and every day with our students. As parents, guardians, and you, board members, visit our schools, please remember to also thank our unsung, un, I can't say it, unsung heroes, the education support professionals. Thank the secretaries and security assistants that welcome you, check your IDs while keeping our schools safe as they sign you in. Thank our LPNs that make sure your children get their medical needs met. Also, thank all of our instructional assistants who work with our most at-risk students. As you heard, to make sure their goals and services are met, to keep us compliant with the state. And above all this, thank CASE ESP for doing what they do each and every day with love from their heart, without a raise or a new contract. It takes a village, and with that village, we believe together it is possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other employee groups here this evening? No? Okay. Then with that, we will move on to Section 3, Board Member and Superintendent Updates. So, board members, the activities and correspondence for the month. Ms. Herbert, we'll have you go first.
Good evening. As usual, I have been out and about almost every day that I possibly can, and sometimes I go to two and three, four things. But last week, on Thursday evening, when it was raining, I was headed up to Elmer Wolf, one of my ambassador schools, and I wasn't more than a mile away from the school, and the low air pressure tire light came on. I'm going, I am up in Union Bridge, I do not know anybody up there, and then I thought, I'm in luck. I went to the stop sign, I turned left, and I thought, Perry Jones, mayor of Union Bridge and Tuck's Garage, 545, am I going to be okay? I pulled in, and there he was. And I walked in there, and he says, what are you doing here? I said, well, I'm going to, I was going to visit Elmer Wolf, but I have, I have a low tire. Can you help me? He goes, of course. And he always is very helpful. So when I got ready to leave, I thanked him, and I said, do I owe you anything? And he goes, no. And he said, wait, I need your help. And here it is. He has asked me that if I could help him get the 1891 Union Bridge Schools bell placed in Elmer Wolf on display. I said, of course, I will be glad to help you. So, of course, I was still headed to good old Elmer Wolf, and I talked to Ms. Belsky, who is here tonight, the principal is here, and she said, oh, she thought that was so exciting. So, I'm excited, and believe it or not, there are some of the alumni of this school still alive, they have a little war chest of money, and anybody else that would be interested in donating money and helping the cause, I already told somebody in the back, the principal of the Career in Tech, I will be asking her for her help, maybe on design, and how to encase this, and how to put this on display. And Dr. Lockard has known about this bell, but I didn't know how to go about it. So I've been making some phone calls, so this is going to be a little project in the making, so if anybody has any ideas or anything, the man is right here to my right, and I will be glad to help out. But I tell you what, we need to save Carroll County heritage, and this is something that is so unique, and it does need to be saved. So there we are. So I was, it was worth me unfortunately getting low air in my tire, and Perry Jones is always very helpful. On a different note, our hearts and prayers go out to Carroll Springs because they did lose a student last several days. And I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and please enjoy this time with your families. I know this will be the first year that my mom will not be here. So enjoy your families, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Herbert. Dr. Dorsey?
I think we're all passing the buck on this one for someone else to go next.
I'll do it.
May I ask where is this bell currently located?
The bell is in the Town Hall right now. Yeah, he has it. It's in the basement. So we'll figure it all out. We will figure it out. But I'm excited.
Well, a very good cause. Thanks very much for heading that. Okay, my activities for tonight, on October 17th, I attended the celebration and grand opening of the gymnasium at the Westminster's Boys and Girls Club, and that was a very, very fine evening, and a lot to celebrate as far as the Boys and Girls Club is concerned. On the 23rd of October, I attended the MAE Conference Committee meeting, and at that point, we debriefed the evaluations from our Fall Conference. On 10/24, I had the opportunity to attend the Career and Technology Center for the presentation of the National Harbor Freight Tools for Schools Prize Award, which was presented to the masonry teacher, Michael, I think Campenile, and also to the welding teacher, Michael Schweinsberg. So again, our congratulations to those two staff members. On the 25th of October, I had the opportunity to attend the Teacher of the Year Gala, and what a very, very fine evening that was. I was very, very fond of our teaching profession, and certainly, our congratulations again to our own Brandy Jason, who was our representative, and to all of the Teachers of the Year who attended that gala. On the 29th and 30th, I attended a Maryland Cultural Proficiency Conference, which was held at Morgan State University, and our theme was, "The Time Is Now: Fortifying the Equity Pipeline." And during that conference, I had the opportunity to attend several worthwhile sessions. So thanks to Judy Jones for making that possible for us. On the 5th of November, I attended the Veterans Day Appreciation Ceremony at Northwest Middle School, and I know a number of our schools reach out and recognize the veterans in their communities, and it's such a wonderful way to connect our students with veterans. And the ones that I have attended, the ceremonies have just been beautiful and very touching. The veterans certainly have been very, very proud, and some of them have even worn their uniforms to these celebrations. So again, our thanks to all of the veterans in Carroll County who have served our country. On the 6th of November, I attended the State Delegation Meeting, which was here, and our Community Town Meeting at Westminster High School. On Veterans Day, I attended another Veterans Day Appreciation Ceremony, the one that was held at Winters Mill High School, and again, a very, very fine tribute to the veterans in the area. And on yesterday, I had the opportunity to attend the Carroll County Public School Minority Student Summit, which involved all of our students in activities focused on having equitable and inclusive environments that are free of hate, violence, insensitivity, and disrespect. And the summit provided another opportunity to actually listen to what our students are saying. So we had the opportunity to hear the student voices.
Thank you, Dr. Dorsey. Ms. Pataglia?
So, you know, been around town, going to different events, been invited to a couple of different political opportunities. Were just kind of a couple of questions they ask, different things that we're doing and talking about. Kind of setting the record straight on a couple of things, too, because there's been a couple rumors of things, but the record's been set straight, speaking just as much. But I've also attended the Teacher of the Year Gala, which was amazing. It was a great opportunity to see all the different Teacher of the Year nominees from the different areas in the state. I attended the trick-or-treat at the Crossroads and Gateway that they had for the Pride students and for Carroll Springs, and that was such an amazing opportunity. I loved seeing all the different costumes. I have to say, my favorite was probably the one that, he looked like a bushel of crabs, and it was so cute. And the kids were just so, I mean, they lit up. I mean, they just had such an amazing time. And I love saying that, and I love that we have those interactions with the different schools. I attended the delegation meeting that was here, Town Hall at Westminster High, which was really well-attended. I had an opportunity to attend the Veterans Day Dinner at Manchester Valley High School, and that was very nice. Instrumental program, they played a piece of every armed forces theme, so different armed forces got to stand up and be recognized. Very nice meal, Class of 2020 did an amazing job. And I want to say congratulations to all the Fall athletes. We had an amazing Fall season. I'm so impressed with everything that, you know, between football, volleyball, golf, soccer, I mean, it's been an incredible season, and we got a couple teams still going to states. So I'm excited, you know, to see what's going to happen this weekend. And of course, this weekend, many winter sport tryouts are happening, so good luck to all the students going out for winter sports. You know, even if you don't make the team, you took initiative to try and just keep trying. There's always something else out there for you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Kyler?
Excuse me. October 17th, I attended the Complete a New Home Celebration at the Boys and Girls Club of Westminster. What a great facility, and so many great people contributed to it. They're a great partner with the school system. I'd love to see them do a little satellite over in Hampstead and Manchester. October 19th, Manchester Wrestling held a crab feed at Manchester Fire Hall, 32 bushels of crabs and 100-plus dozen of oysters that went in an hour and a half, and a great night. October 21st, MAE Legislative Committee in Annapolis. October 24th, I got to visit Career and Tech and see the Two Mikes and everyone else associated with that school, be awarded second place from a tool company and $50,000. I just think that's amazing. Mount Airy Middle School Tour, the East Middle Construction Committee did a tour of that school. It was handled great. I think we were there probably two and a half hours, but I think it gave the East Middle Construction Committee a good idea of what it would be like to be in a new building. Teacher of the Year Gala, that's already been mentioned. Another commercial for wrestling, but I think it's neat. About every three months, we do breakfast with my high school wrestling coach, who is obviously older than I am even. Teammates from the 60s, some of you probably know him, it's Donald Rec. He was a teacher, a coach, assistant principal, and principal of East Middle. He doesn't watch these meetings, but I think his wife does, so if you're watching, hi, Mrs. Rec. And she also tells, well, through him, tells me how we did. Again, another East Middle Construction Planning Committee, Board of Ed meeting with legislators, Community Town Hall Westminster, which was probably the largest and most diverse crowd to date, and I shouldn't worry about educators and even the parents, but I'm looking around, it's such a diverse group. Staff did a great presentation, but kind of had some guidelines for people to rank. Well, nobody was shy. If their group was different than on the ranking sheet, that was, that got ranked. And so a lot of good subjects came up. It was just a great evening. I hope they continue to be that much fun. Veteran Day Breakfast at William Winchester, they just did a super job with that, and so many people there of different generations, and some in uniform, some in not, and just by luck, that was also the first day of their book fair. So got to walk through the book fair while we were there, and that was, that was a lot of fun. Yesterday was Veterans and Police Officers Lunch at the American Legion in Westminster. James Simpson and Ray Care were both honored there. They happened to, neither one lives in the area anymore. You may have seen a little bit about them in the paper lately. They're both North Carroll High School grads, and it was just neat. Also of note, they give a, they give an award to the veteran-friendly business, and this year, they chose to give it to Carroll County Government, which I think's neat. You don't normally see it go to government, and they listed all the stuff you guys do, and it's pretty neat. All the schools did some great veteran stuff this week. There may be a few more coming. I'd also like to mention, this is the time of the year, there's a lot of drama productions going on. It's a good, cheap way to spend a fun evening. And it's interesting tonight, we've heard about drama, sports, robotics, and I tell you guys, extracurriculars, I just, I love it. You still gotta, you gotta have great grades, but if you have great grades, sometimes the extracurricular break the tie, either for a job or for college admission. It shows what you're willing to do, so keep it up, guys. And then, one last on a sad note, Westminster High School in the early 70s, Steve Huff was the first wrestler in the state of Maryland to win three consecutive state titles. And of note, Westminster didn't allow ninth graders to go to high school then. They were at the junior high school, so he only wrestled three years, and won states all three years. Unfortunately, he's at a bout with cancer and strokes and passed away this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kyler. Just a couple of quick things I'm going to touch on. It's a busy time of year, a lot going on, but the couple of things that I was able to attend were the Maryland Teacher of the Year Gala. That was really a fun event. We're so proud of Brandy Jason, and I would like to say that I think we were the loudest table at the event. I'm very proud at our lung capacity for really supporting our teacher, Brandy Jason, and we're so proud of her for being a finalist this year. And at our last board meeting, we had the discussion about East Middle and the location site, and I had said that I would follow up with- And I had said that I would follow up with Mayor Joe Dominic for the city of Westminster. I'd have a discussion about water. And so I did meet with Mayor Joe a couple of weeks ago and had a really great discussion. So I'll report on the findings of that later on within the context of the East Middle and the Career and Tech discussions. But I just want to say that it was a pleasure meeting with him. And I really want to make sure that we keep the lines of communication open amongst all the key stakeholders in the county. And I think that's how we're really going to move the ball forward effectively in the future. So I appreciate his willingness to meet with us and have such an open discussion. And the last one is, I had the pleasure of speaking to a Boy Scouts troop the other night. There were about 15 of them. And I had the pleasure of joining Andy Harris to speak as leaders of the community for them working on their merit badge for their Arrow of Light. And it was pretty amazing, these group of kids. They kept me on my toes. I was there for about an hour. And the number of questions that they were peppering me about on the school system, it was pretty amazing that these are 10-, 11-year-olds. And the level of insightful questions that they were asking about the school system was really impressive. It was a fun night. So I appreciate having that opportunity. So, board members, with that, I think we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Savigny. Mr. Kyler, I appreciate you mentioning Mr. Rec. He was my principal at East Middle School when I attended there.
I didn't teach you.
We found one.
Couple of board members had mentioned this in their comments. It's worth repeating. The congratulations to Mike Campagnile and Mike Schwansberg at the Career and Technology Center. These two outstanding teachers. Just to give you a little background, there were 15 second-place winners across the country for the 2019 Harbor Freight Tools for Schools Prize. And this is for teaching excellence. They were the only winners of this national award from Maryland. And so, as you stated, or one of the board members stated, they received $50,000 as a result of that prize. And so a lot of support back to the Career and Technology Center to support the skilled trades programs, which we're so proud of. So congratulations, that's worth repeating. You might have seen this in, I think it was in the newspaper today, in the Carroll County Times, also on our website, recognizing four of our outstanding high school students recently named semifinalists in the National Merit Scholarship Program. We congratulate Lanaya Davidson and Hannah Nguyen from Westminster High School, Alexander Schmidt from Manchester Valley High School, and Anjan Singh from Liberty High School. All these students have achieved great success in rigorous academic courses. They also are actively involved in many other activities, to your point, Mr. Kyler, including student government, athletics, school clubs and organizations, and community service. I could go on and on about their accomplishments here. But I would encourage you, if you haven't checked out the article or seen the information on our website, go take a look at these outstanding students who have made us very proud. We're also very proud that our high school marching bands have had a very successful season, another great extracurricular activity here connected to our programming. We brought home awards from some major championship competitions during this marching band season. The Liberty High School Lions Pride Marching Band made history by becoming the only Maryland band in the entire 40 years of the Tournament of Bands to win the Atlantic Coast Championships for a second time. The band captured this year's championship title with a score of 96.25 and the award for high brass. Liberty won the ACC two consecutive years, so two years in a row. Quite an accomplishment. Four of our marching bands performed very well in the Maryland Marching Band Association Championships. Century and Westminster High Schools placed first in their class, with Century receiving specialty awards for Best Color Guard, Best Overall Effect, and Westminster for Best Percussion and Best Music Performance. Francis Scott Key High School received fifth place. And South Carroll High School earned second place in their classes. South Carroll also received the Philip Glass Creativity Award. So we want to congratulate all those band members, directors, parents, volunteers. That's a lot of hard work that resulted in a great season. So congratulations. Finally, last week, three students from the Career and Technology Center were each presented with the Building, Congress, and Exchange Future Craftsman and Design Award. This award honors exemplary craftsmanship within the construction industry and recognizes the talent and skill that go into the outstanding workmanship in our region. We want to say congratulations to Ariana Diaz from Century High School, who's in the drafting program, Jonah Mayner from Manchester Valley High School in the welding program, and Logan Davidson from Winters Mill High School from the electrical program. Congratulations to all those students. And with the Thanksgiving season upon us, I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much. Okay, and with that, we'll move on to Section 4 with Presentations. And first up is the CCPS Robotics League presentation.
By the way, Kristi, you're going to be sitting at the table with us. So welcome. So, good evening, Presidents Savigny, board members, Superintendent Lockard, Commissioner Weaver. It is a pleasure this evening to sit in front of you to present some exciting news that's taking place here in Carroll County Public Schools. I do want to start off by saying, anyone at the table, if I misspeak, please don't hesitate to jump in. I'm joined this evening with Tracy Belsky, Principal at Elmer Wolf, Kristi Densdett, who is one of our coaches of the robotics team, Isabella, who goes by Bella Ree Snider with us, and then Ben Roblech, who is one of our individuals who presented to you this evening already. I arrived to Carroll County Public Schools about a year ago, and I heard immediately of the amazing success of the RoboLions and the experience that these young adults get to have. I was then later made aware of that the RoboLions actually competed and finished fourth in the actual Worlds at that time, I believe. The Robocavs, excuse me, the Robocavs. Fourth, is that right? Which took place in Detroit, Michigan? Is that right? All right. So I started to think to myself, there's something special going on here in this county in regards to robotics. So, I then had several conversations with many of you about how can we make this happen for all kids? And so when you present me with that challenge, immediately, we're going to go put our heads together and figure out how it is that we can do that. I later found out that this has actually been taking place in some of our elementary schools for as long as five years. And that there was lots that I could learn about this and hear from kids and teachers and building-level leaders on how we could scale this. So, after those, after being made aware of that, had the opportunity then to connect with Rose at Pi Cubed, learned a little bit of what MSD-E was offering as well. And then, obviously, some of the great supporters in our community, such as Greg Kaller and the Kaller Foundation, I noticed that at a number of competitions, as I read more, he was actually a supporter of Pi Cubed. So, Mr. Shoemaker and I, who is our coordinator of STEM, began to figure out what it is that we can do to provide an experience for our students within the school. Because right now, whether it's the RoboLions or the Robocavs, I understand that oftentimes, we are getting mentorship, we are getting coaching, we are working with individuals outside the school system, oftentimes. And I met a few of them this evening in regards to the coaches. And what we started to learn more about, and this is a recent article from EdTech Digest of March of this year, is that the skills that these students are learning or sharpening are the skills, whether they explore mechanical engineering or whether they explore a field, a career in this world, but they're actually learning the skills that Dr. Lockard often talks about, the attributes of a graduate and what we want to see. We want to see students with the abilities to understand, to work with others, to seek first to understand, to be able to communicate, to begin to realize that not everyone thinks like you do. And we have to figure out a way to accomplish a goal together. I then, later through other conversations, I started to learn from the coaches that they actually are learning themselves, and they're figuring out things themselves about the challenges that are presented to them. And so I just had a quick conversation with Kristi this evening in regards to parks, and that she's going to be working with the community in regards to one of the challenges of bringing in some of the community members to educate herself, as well as her students, on how to create or develop a park. And basically, how would this potential robot be able to take advantage of an ADA environment? So, it's really exciting stuff. So then, we, through further conversation, we decided that we were going to go ahead and explore the first, what we would call the First Robotics Program. And the First Robotics Program is actually broken up into four different areas. Those areas based on the level of student, if you will. First being First Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology. It's a not-for-profit STEM engagement program for students worldwide. You've probably heard of it before, you've probably seen it before. But this is a hands-on STEM experience. It builds confidence, it grows knowledge, and it develops habits of learning, which I just mentioned earlier. Coaches are encouraged, students to try, to fail, right? The acronym of F A L E S, First Attempt in Learning. And try again, while connecting STEM concepts to real-world examples, which I mentioned earlier about the park design. So, we took the challenge of scaling this and looking at how we can put a robotics team in every single school, which is our goal. We think it's a realistic goal. When we sat down with Mr. Kaller, he challenged us. And I think he had a healthy amount of skepticism that we could pull this off. I'm very happy to tell you today that half of our schools are represented with a robotics team in just a short few months. We have to continue to learn and to watch and to hear from our students, just like the student voice. We want to continue to hear from our students on how it is that we can scale this, grow this, and also learn from our coaches and our community members that have been doing this for a while. You can see there, in 2019, we didn't have any of the youngsters, I would call them, the first LEGO kids. This year, we have seven teams represented out of three elementary schools. That's a huge win. When you look at our students in grades four through eight, I believe we had two schools at Elmer Wolf. Two teams, rather, two schools. Two teams at Elmer Wolf. This year, we have 20 that are representing those grade levels. When you start to look into the high school, I believe there was three teams at South Carroll. Historically, we are now at five teams within three high schools. And then finally, the most sophisticated area, I think in the past, was Century. And again, correct me if I'm wrong, guys, but we are still there right now with that. One of the big pieces that we're seeing in the support from our Human Resource Office has been fantastic, is in regards to finding a stipend for our coaches. These folks are putting in an enormous amount of time. They've already told me several times over tonight that they need more time. And that's something I hear every day for a variety of reasons. But that is something that we know that when we show value, we provide our coaches with a stipend, a small stipend. To have this opportunity to work with kids, it's working out. So, thank you for that support. As I mentioned, the Kaller Foundation has provided us with a two-year grant of roughly $80,000. That amount of money in collaboration with the MSD-E Robotics Grant that we wrote together with Pi Cubed is essentially to get this off the ground. It's not going to be able to sustain it. So this is in conjunction with the work that we're doing with our schools. And we're talking about the PTAs and the PTOs and all the other different types of organizations that are supporting schools, because we want to start to educate them about, we may need your support moving forward to keep this team going if you find it valuable. The money that we receive is pretty much for materials. It is not for paying our staff members. That is through our own system. But it is for materials. And we also are looking at building capacity of our coaches and bringing them in and trying to give them some more insights and support so they can work with the kids and have a more positive experience as well. As I mentioned, I want to just recognize the partnerships. And Pi Cubed, which I've mentioned earlier this evening, we are so very fortunate. I also want to recognize the Carpentry Program. And everyone knows John Mersinger. But they have taken on the responsibility of building the actual tables where the competitions will, where the actual programming takes place and the competitions, or the practice, rather, of the competitions can take place. Carroll Community College, a huge partner, they will be hosting the December 14th event. We hope to see you there. We know that a number of the commissioners will be attending as well. We're excited about that. And it's going to be a day-long experience. When I got the agenda from Rose, I was like, oh, I'm going to be there at 6:00 in the morning that day, and I'll be going home at 5:00. I was like, okay, I see how this worked. Baton switch. So anyway, community, volunteers, and further grants and partners. And I was speaking to a couple of volunteers that, you know, it's something that they obviously enjoy as well. There's opportunities here for us to look out into our community and to say, here's another opportunity for you guys to help us out in the schools to work with some kids. So, as I shared already, it is our goal, it is our vision, that every child will have the opportunity. There will be a team at every school. That we will have a county champion one day, if you will. Very similar as we do with athletics. That is our goal. And again, we're going to continue to increase support of our coaches, mentors, and training and professional learning for our coaches. And I'll just leave you once again with that reminder, for all those who are watching at home as well. We hope to see you there. So what I'd like to do is stop talking at this time. And I'd like to turn it over to the folks that I invited to be with us this evening. I'd like to start with Tracy. If you wouldn't mind talking a little bit about your experience of the past five years and the benefits that you feel it has provided to our students and staff and community.
Certainly. Well, I can actually start with the concept that it's hard for staff members to figure out how to do all of this stuff. But it is intuitive for the students. So I find that over time, we learn quite a bit from what they're able to do. You know, right off the bat, we'll spend an hour looking at a YouTube video, like, what? What did they do? How did they do that? And then the kid picks it up and doesn't look at anything and can instantly meet the goal that they were actually, you know, like, starting with. So, over the course of time, it's been great to watch how the students have developed into really deep thinkers about what it's going to take to get the robot to do what they need it to do. And then to watch, as our staff members, you know, like, over time, have worked very hard on their own robotics, so they can help the students. And it's been really, over the course of five years, we've really, I think, finally landed at a really good place. And it's a joy to watch the students work so hard. And it's not just about the robotics. Students are also asked to do a research project that aligns with the theme. So that's where the playground kind of came into play. And then we have, like, I think our other team is doing, there's a, they, yes, there's a train that goes through the town of Union Bridge every single morning, and it traps their bus on the other side of the train tracks. And so because this year, the theme is, you know, designing a, you know, a community, they want to talk to people about how they can improve the design so their bus is not trapped on the other side of the tracks. So I feel like they've really given it a lot of thought of how it applies to their own lives. So with that being said...
Kristi, do you mind just saying a few words before we turn it over to the students?
Well, I think I speak for, I think I speak for all of the coaches in saying, we really appreciate your support and the additional funding this year. I didn't have a chance to take advantage of the opportunity, but my co-coach did in attending what she deemed LEGO school. And it was a professional development opportunity for the coaches to really get some hands-on interaction. Because like Mrs. Belsky said, it's kind of, it's not as much second nature for the adults as it is for the kids. So having that formal training and that support is really invaluable to us this season. We are on our fifth season as a school, and to watch the program grow the way that it has is really exciting. I have friends in, friends at other schools who are just starting this year. And I think they're really, they're a little more frustrated with the fact that they only have a limited number of slots. We really have the benefit of having two teams this year. And so we didn't have to turn anyone away. turn anyone away. So it'd be a really wonderful thing if we were able to continue to expand the program and offer it to more and more of our students who are just, they're thirsty for these kind of opportunities. So we appreciate your support and thank you.
You're joined with June Preet, who's here as well. June, do you mind just standing up real quick? That's June Preet. She's also one of the coaches of the team.
She runs the LEGO school.
So the most important, I'd just like to have Bella, if you don't mind saying a few words, and then Ben, if you don't mind sharing.
Well, I really do think that LEGO League really does help a lot of students because it's something after school that's like easy and it helps you learn math skills and teamwork skills. And for me, it's helped me with leadership skills. Yeah, so it's really fun and it's amazing.
Thank you.
Robotics has been the greatest experience of my life so far. It's taught me so much over the past few years. First, I started in a first LEGO league team when I was in middle school. Our team name was the Supercircuits. And then after that, we moved up to first robotics competition. And that is the team I am on now, the RoboLions. And it's been the greatest experience of my life. It's taught me so many skills, not only learning how to build and compete with robots like the one in the back over there, but I've also learned great teamwork skills and also how to communicate well, like getting a group to come together to build something like that in just six short weeks. And these skills have translated in my educational career as I've recently applied to an internship at a defense contracting company. And there were four people accepted and three of the four are RoboLions members. So it's really, really translated into what I'm learning and what I've been striving to achieve in my career so far. So thank you.
Thank you. So if there's any questions from the board at this time?
Do you mind, well, we're going to be here till midnight anyway. Do you mind if each student and coach just stand up and say, name, grade, and school? Just that simple, not a speech, but just tell us who you are.
You want to start, name, grade, and school?
I'm third grade, I'm a Shiloh and I'm in eighth grade.
Awesome.
I'm Adrian Yeo, I'm a senior at South Carroll.
I'm Alex Wolf, I'm a senior at South Carroll also.
I'm Adrian Griffin, I'm a senior and I'll go to CCBC.
Yeah, I talked to him last year.
I'm Bill Breski, I'm in eighth grade.
Yeah.
I'm Olivia Marchewski, also in eighth grade.
My name's Maya Potter and I'm in eighth grade also at Oklahoma Road School.
Lucas Walltower, eighth grade, Oklahoma Road.
Do you mind introducing yourself?
Sure. Scott Walltower, I'm a coach, I'm a coach, I'm a PC team, Oklahoma Road mostly.
Anyone else? Okay.
I'm Fred, excuse me, I'm a mentor for the RoboLions and with the other teams I've been involved with, this is my 19th year being a mentor for high school robotics.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for being here tonight. And, you know, we had the pleasure of watching some of the robotics out in the hallway and getting to talk to some of the students. It was really exciting to see the passion in your eyes about what you're doing. You know, you were saying that this was the best experience of your life and that translated in talking to you guys out in the foyer. So thank you for being here and I think this is just really exciting.
I remember last year, it was actually one of my very first events I attended as a board event member. And I was so impressed with everything that the students were doing. I mean, they had the LEGO table and they were competing a little bit and then you had the older ones in the back with the one that has the ball and they were describing how they have to, it's a week-by-week process. And I remember emailing Tom and going, how do we get this going? Because it was just incredible to see these students so engaged in something that I think is so difficult because I look, I don't even get me started, like, I don't even want to know. I look at a tape and I'm just, give me a pencil, that, I wouldn't have any clue how to put together, but it's incredible to me that these students are very capable of doing this.
I would also just like to share my thanks to you all for being involved in the robotics. And I join Mrs. Batiglia in saying that I was at Elmer Wolf last year when the one competition was held and, you know, just a lot of excitement in the air and just a lot of neat things happening. And prior to that, I had been invited to the library down in Eldersburg and the robotics team there was having a competition where they were smashing pumpkins. So the robots were set up so that they could be put in motion to smash a pumpkin. And that was just so very, very exciting. And then I think with one of the younger teams, they also had robots set up where the robot had to make a basket. You know, they used a little ball or whatever and tossed it into a container. But, you know, you could just see the excitement on the kids' faces and you just know a lot of learning, a lot of problem solving, a lot of collaboration. I mean, it was all right there. So again, you know, thanks for being involved and certainly thanks to the coaches over the years. I mean, for the one gentleman, 19 years coaching a robotics team, just kudos and many thanks. And I'm just glad and excited to see that we are going to be providing that throughout our school system.
Jackson?
We need to get this everywhere now.
I'm trying.
Because, I mean, just the way some of you teams have moved up through and just gradually, you went from your junior league to your high school team, that seems like an awesome experience. I think we just need to get to kids everywhere and make sure they have the opportunity to grow through that process and have the best experience of their life.
Couldn't agree more.
Well, and just to, you know, make a comment on that, Elmer Wolf, for five years, we've had teams, but then they haven't had anywhere to go. So when they've left Elmer and gone on to the middle school, there haven't been an organized team for them. So we kind of started something, but we didn't have the power to do the follow-through for that. So I think that that is an important piece to why it should be much more widespread than just a tiny local place.
And again, we certainly have to thank the teachers and the administrators for being involved. I know Tracy, when we were there that Saturday, I'm sure you were there super, super early to have everything ready for the competition to take place.
So that would actually go to Rose, who I would be lost without Rose for any of the competitions, who is always there early, she always is in touch, and we make sure that we have all the things that she's going to need to make sure everything runs very, very smoothly. So I'm very grateful to her. She has been very helpful for our teams and we really couldn't do it without her.
I'd like to thank Rose, Pi Cubed, all our partners, the volunteers that have supported it, our team also. You know, I know when you got here, Mr. Anderson, I said, we need to, we need to grow this. And we know that there's huge interest and I appreciate our students being here, sharing some of the benefits. You hear it from them, right? It's exciting, but they recognize that they're also getting a lot more out of it and these are life skills that are going to carry these students very far. If you haven't attended a tournament, I highly encourage you to try to make it on December 14th because it's really fun to watch. And I remember last year being at Elmer Wolf and I've been to other tournaments in my past as well where you see this in action. You see the problem solving, the communication, the collaboration, the critical thinking on the fly, talking to students. It's just fascinating to hear about their design, how they've programmed things, what they're trying to, you know, their challenges that they've faced. It's just a, it's a whole big process and I'm really proud of our school system and all the partners and of course our outstanding students for making this more of a reality for more students in Carroll County.
I just looked, it's a Saturday. So putting it on my calendar, bringing both of my kids, this is, this is very exciting stuff.
And thank you, Rose. I went, I used to go to Finksburg and see you all down there with your robotics. You've come a long way, keep up the great work and thank you all. And I remember several of you high school young gentlemen there and good luck in your, everybody's competition.
So Mr. Anderson, I know you touched on it really quickly in your comments, but, so the students, I had a chance to talk with them out in the foyer. And so you came in fourth in worlds out of how many teams?
It's like 7,000.
7,000 teams. So just wanted to say that for the record, that's phenomenal. Thank you so much all for being here tonight. Okay. And after that, we will move on to the strategic plan, pillar three update.
Okay. Thank you, board members. I'll give a little segue while we're transitioning here. As you know, now that we're operating fully under the board strategic plan, including the annual reporting cycle, we're going to provide updates on the performance targets for pillar three. And so for this scheduled November update, we'll present on focus area one. And then at the February update, we'll present on focus area two. Ms. Baptist is coming up front and bringing a team with her, including Judy Jones, Michael Brown, and Jim Rodriguez. They'll present the update, also relate their experiences to some of our leaders in the system, both being recruited at Carroll County Public Schools and working on recruitment and retention initiatives. So with that, Ms. Baptist.
Hello. Good evening Superintendent Locker, board members, and Commissioner Weaver. Again, we consider it a pleasure to speak with you this evening in regards to pillar three and our objectives to recruit and retain a diverse workforce. So wanted to present you with a quote in regards to diversity is magic. As we continue to recognize the benefits of having minority educators in the classroom for minority and non-minority students, we also acknowledge that CCPS staffing diversity remains one of our most significant challenges. However, I also believe that one day it will also be one of our greatest triumphs. In taking into account Maryland's teacher staffing data report, in continuation of pillar three objectives, again, remains to be, to recruit and retain qualified staff and increase minority retention. However, as we discuss our staffing initiatives, we need to also mention prevalent themes such as the defined critical shortage areas. Recorded in the Maryland staff, MSDE staffing report, some of the staffing challenges we have are also carried out throughout the state. We are seeing similar trends in CCPS as to those which are occurring in regards to the critical shortage areas such as computer science, ESOL, science seven through 12, mathematics, and respectfully, respectfully always on the list, is special education in all subject areas. Male and minority teachers remain a struggle and a shortage area for a majority of the LEAs. The state of Maryland has declared a shortage of teachers who are male and a shortage of teachers who are members of the minority groups. The supply of male and minority teachers within the state have also impacted our ability to recruit and retain efforts addressed in pillar three. We also take into account the non-classroom shortages such as media specialists, school psychologists, and speech pathologists. For these areas, we also compete with private organizations which are sometimes able to offer higher wages, which makes it more competitive. When we look at the Maryland teacher staffing data historical report, Maryland teachers, Maryland colleges historically do not produce sufficient minority candidates to meet the state's needs. The data demonstrates how, as a state, we struggle with moving the needle to the production of minority educators. The lack of new local minority educators only adds to the struggles. To help address this concern, MSDE recently wrote out a program which focuses on minority high school Marylanders promoting a focus on education. It was very well-attended. We, CCPS, was represented at the event, planting that seed that when those students who have an interest in education, think about other, think about their final career decisions, that they think about Carroll County Public Schools. So we're trying to plant that seed early because we know that this is not just a sprint, this is a marathon, and that this is a continuous effort in regards to providing all of our students, not only our current students, but for our students for many years to come, with that diverse workforce within front of them. Sorry.
You dropped so much from '08, '09. Do you have an opinion or?
Yes, so.
You generally have an opinion.
I will, the, I will tell you, the finances, the recession.
Money.
Yeah, the money. The students are now, they have, they have the same focus, mathematics focus, however, they will translate those jobs into private sector jobs where they can earn substantially more. So now we're trying to, with diverse focuses within changing our funding sources, we're able to try to be a little bit more attractive with salaries as well as presenting to them the messaging that they're not only having a career, they're changing the world. So we're trying to have that focus with them as well.
Thanks.
Thank you for operating. Again, our focus remains to be to develop and support a successful workforce. With the local teacher shortage, we continue to evaluate recruitment and expand our efforts. In order to retain, we recognize that the initial focus must be on recruitment and where to find qualified minority educators. Attending new events provide us with an opportunity to expand our potential candidate pool and hopefully attract highly qualified talent from other regions. We have implemented a new recruiter training program in hopes of providing our recruiters with tools to recognize and attract highly qualified individuals within our career affairs. So we are training our recruiters and giving them the tools necessary to engage with these individuals. Some of our recruiters are these two handsome gentlemen beside me. Mr. Rodriguez is one of our distinguished recruiters and has been a part of our new recruiting strategy. And Mr. Brown is one of our latest great hires and will provide us with some of his information about his CCPS experience.
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit with you about my experience. So as Dr. Dorsey, board member Dr. Dorsey, knows, yesterday I had an opportunity to be involved with a great happening in our school system. So our Minority Student Summit took place. We had about 100 high school and middle school student leaders gathered together and these are various groups throughout our system that are part of maybe a minority group within their own school, but they came together as a county and got to experience some really good training. They had, they learned about courageous conversations, which I'm sure you're familiar with, right? They had an opportunity to do some activities such as mind messaging, what do you tell yourself, how to, they were empowered, right? They were empowered to be able to make some impact at their respective schools and obviously in our school system. But one of the things that I wanted to share with you that I believe relates to recruiting is this. One of the main messages that I heard out of that day yesterday was, you know, we do not have enough adults, administrators, teachers, staff members that look like me, that look like me, that can relate to what I've experienced, who can understand something that I've been through. And they're looking for those adults in their buildings to be able to identify, you understand, to be able to talk with so someone understands them. They do actually feel that sometimes when they speak to some of the individuals in our school system, that that individual can't really relate to what their experiences have been as a minority student in our system. So I relate that to recruiting because Mr. Brown and myself had an opportunity to go to New York City this past spring. And we encountered several hundred individuals that were very qualified, some of them I would say even overqualified, to be able to, you know, potentially come into our school system. But as you probably know, there are some challenges, right, for someone maybe living in New York City to come to Carroll County to be able to come and teach. Yet, we need to overcome those barriers, right? We need to be able to meet those challenges head-on and saying, what is attractive about Carroll County? There's a lot of things that are attractive about Carroll County, but we need to make that known to those minority qualified educators out there, you know, so they can come and join us in our system. Because as, you know, as Ms. Baptist is saying, you know, diversity is magic, right? For us to be able to get a wide array of experiences so our students can be able to grow from those experiences. So I would love for your support of recruitment when it comes to minority folks out there to be able to help our school system.
Thank you, board, for giving me the opportunity to speak to you all this evening. I just want to talk a little bit about, you know, my experience, being the second African-American secondary principal hired in Carroll County Public School history. You know, I take that very personally and really take this work home with me each and every day on how we can really change the on how we can really change the narrative in our school district. My experience has been nothing but phenomenal. I share that with everybody that I know. And it's almost when I talk to other minority candidates, they want to really know what my experiences really are. And it's almost like they're waiting for the other shoe to drop when I'm having that conversation. And I'm like, no, things are good. Like, everything is good. People treat you well. There aren't any issues or any things like that here in this particular school district. So for me, it's, for Carroll County, it's fighting a narrative that is a history that we really have to fight against as a school district as it relates to us and how we treat minority candidates. I don't think that that's current. I think that it's probably in the past, way long in the past. So my job that I want to do is to try to change that narrative. Some of the things that I've tried to do is to try to help Ms. Baptist as much as possible to recruit minority candidates.
And we thank him. He was responsible for Ms. Mobley, so, the new president of FSK.
Yes. And so that is a huge issue. I've hired two African-American teachers this school year. My thing is, is that when I have these conversations with individuals, again, it is about giving them the real focus of what our school district is really about. And the focus is, we have phenomenal kids. We have phenomenal educators. We have phenomenal people here that some of my colleagues in the room behind me are phenomenal. They have a history of experience and a pedigree that I think is unprecedented in this great state. But a lot of people don't know. We're a little bit of a smaller school district and people don't know. My job is to really spread that good news as much as I can. So I just ask you all to continue to be supportive of our initiatives that Ms. Baptist talked about. I will say, send us wherever you want. Me and Jimmy are game to go wherever it is you like.
He just signed you up.
But seriously, I mean, it is an honor to really be able to do that work because I think we're making some headway in that department. So, like we talked about, once you get one, you get two. Once you get two, you get four. And I really think that's how we're going to change it.
Mr. Brown, I have to say, the connection you have made at Winter's Mill is phenomenal. I hear from so many families that their children are having an amazing experience there because of you. And you are making sure that every child is felt as one. They're not different. They are as one. And I want to thank you very much for that because it was very needed.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
And you guys are probably years ahead of me, but since you two go anyplace. I know Montgomery County tried, I bet it's been 10 or 15 years ago, and particularly it was wrestling, but they felt like they had a shortage of coaches. So they recruited teachers who were D1, D2 athletes who could also be coaches. Is that a good draw to try to get somebody or is it too hard to do the transition anyway? Do both things at once? Is that a way to recruit maybe more by offering them? And I know it's harder to place them then because you got to put them in the school needs a coach. But you've done that, so I know it's easy, right?
Obviously, we're looking for candidates that are able to fulfill multiple roles, right?
Oh, yeah.
So it depends on the need, right? Depending on what the need is. And, you know, if we have an opportunity to go anywhere, you know, we're looking for that kind of candidate that can fulfill multiple jobs, right? Because not only is that candidate going to be able to be a role model in the classroom, that person's going to be able to be a role model, let's say, on the field or in the court or whatever that may be. So most definitely, I think they're out there. As Mr. Brown indicated, we just need to be able to continue to spread the good news about Carroll County, right? So that we can get them.
And let me say real quick, I think also you, because we are a smaller school district and because we have phenomenal educators, we don't have tremendous amounts of turnover. When positions become available, it is highly competitive. So we have to be purposeful about hiring minority candidates when the time comes because, you know, the positions are far few in between when we do have the opportunity to hire.
And I got to tell you one thing quick. Been here all my life. My daughter graduated from North Carroll '98. She showed her two sons her soccer team picture. And they both looked at her and said, where were the brown people that day? And she said, we just didn't have many. But that was their first question. I was amazed.
And in regards to recruiting people from D1 and D2 schools, if they do not have the teaching certificate, we will work with them. No, we will work with them to bring them on and work with them on a conditional basis to get them certified. So we are more than willing, we have a lot of avenues to try to bring individuals on to ensure that they have the supports. One of the best things about our system is the size and the supports and the mentor relationships that we provide with our new educators.
Dr. Dorsey?
And I was just going to comment that one of the things that we felt most helpful in the past when I was sitting in your shoes and involved with helping to recruit, we found that using the young teachers, the young staff members, the ones who were just coming in with one or two years of experience, taking them out as well on these recruiting trips because a lot of times they could really be the ones to relate to these prospective staff members coming or prospective candidates coming to the county. So I'm not sure, again, whether we're doing that anymore or not, but I think that our first and second year teachers or teachers within, let's say, the first five years could certainly be an asset to helping with the recruitment efforts.
So we reach out to our teachers first because we believe that they are able to provide a firsthand account of the classroom, student and their action, parent engagement, and provide someone, a potential candidate, with a true picture of what's going on in Carroll County Public School. Yes, I may be in the Director of Human Resources, but I'm not in a classroom every day. So I can't relay an accurate picture of what's occurring in the classroom. And that teacher can. And so for someone that's, the candidates have displayed that they really appreciate that opinion. And they really appreciate how enthusiastic they are, that they have had positive experiences. And then sometimes they tell them, you know, I've had, my positives have greatly outweighed my negatives. And then they act as a mentor as that individual becomes a staff member for us.
And Mr. Brown and Mr. Rodriguez, you said you spoke of going to New York.
Yep.
Right? Have there been other states outside of Maryland that you've been visiting regularly or that you're targeting?
So they're not my only recruiters. I love them.
Okay.
We're the only good-looking ones, right?
That's what I heard.
I do it very closely, very, very closely. Yes. So a later slide, if you want, I could flip around or it addresses the new venues.
I tend to jump the gun a lot. I'm sorry.
That's okay. We have went to a lot of new venues this year in regards to direct focuses on minority recruitment. We're going from upper New York down to Florida. And we even have one in Chicago that we're attempting to attend that has a focus strictly on minority professionals.
Okay. Are we being more successful at states outside of Maryland?
So we have had a lot of more interest and a lot more people. Because of our shortage in the state of Maryland, we have to start getting our name out there within other states and reaching other different colleges and becoming more familiar with us, Carroll County. Because sometimes they're like, where are you? Where are you? And we're like, we're outside. We have to always explain as though we're this far from Baltimore. We're this far from DC. And so we want them to become more familiar with us so that we become a school system of choice.
Have we, like, gone down south around Alabama, Texas, Georgia?
We haven't been Alabama, Texas. We have been in, we're currently in North Carolina, South Carolina, Virginia. Not Georgia yet.
Okay.
So. But if you have a venue that you are aware of. We have done some, and we have done some extensive research via the internet trying to find venues. Because if you're not already a part of their designated list, sometimes they don't reach out to you. So you have to reach out to them.
I was just thinking, I mean, like you said, you guys went to New York. And of course, they're like, oh, income level's completely different in New York than it is versus in Maryland. But it would be completely different if you went down south versus, they'd be like, oh, I could probably make a lot more up there than I would down here. That's why I was just kind of asking.
Absolutely. So that's why we've started partnering. We have our localized historically black colleges and university partners, but we're also starting to partner more so with some of the ones from the south to bring them up north. In regards to part of the potential with, the issue with some of the New York candidates that have reached out is the transportation.
Yeah, no metro here.
No metro.
No subway.
In regards to the data points, just wanted to provide that the data collection, we know that in order to move our needle, the important portion is how we capture our data, how we utilize our data. So the MSD data that is collected and submitted early in November is the Maryland Staffing Report. The Employee Engagement Survey will be distributed and completed once the completion of the first semester. The goal of this data point is for our new hires to have an opportunity to provide their a report in regards to their workplace experience. The EXA survey is continuously collected based off and depends upon staffing. On the next slide, we have our baseline information as well as our target. You will see that some of the metrics have moved slightly. And however, that is offset by decline in another area. It is important to note that with the complete number of minority staff being so small, when we have any movement, it greatly impacts the percentages. So the retention rate captured remains a projection with the final results being presented in February.
And is that a little bit later in the year than it's previously been?
Yes. So we wanted to tie it for consistency off of the data. We wanted to tie it to the MSD report.
Okay.
So that way we'll have a consistent reporting measure each year.
Okay, that's great. Because we typically saw the hiring and departure data in November.
Correct.
Okay. But now this will be much more consistent.
And generally, when we presented it previously in November, it was based off of the hiring and departure information we had captured at that time, which differed from the Maryland State Department of Education report. And so for our families and for consistency, we are utilizing one reporting source for the information. We started collecting in regards to minority candidates that are of interest. We started collecting data in July, and that's an ongoing data collection. And the final results will be aimed to present during the February pillar three update. Now here's the slide. So, again, here are some new partnerships that we have entered into that we are engaging with and new venues that we are attending, trying to expand that candidate pool. Recruiting the best talent requires consistent changes. Beyond our standard recruitment, we still recruit with our standard partnerships, McDaniel, Towson, University of Maryland. This year, we have entered into partnerships with the group listed above in order to hopefully to design and to attract various minority groups. To ensure recruiting remains effective, as we do each year, we will continue to review the effectiveness of each relationship. If the business partnership has not yielded the results that we previously were mentioning, we will continuously evaluate to swap partnerships as necessary. Some of the partnerships will require a two-year cycle to truly evaluate effectiveness. In regards to providing professional, we also still take into account, once we get them here, how do we maintain, how do we continue their interest and promote professional growth and leadership opportunities? And Ms. Jones continues to be a strong innovative advocate for diversity and inclusion. We work together on several initiatives to help CCPS education and workplace experiences. So I'm going to let Ms. Jones speak to you about some of the latest and greatest things that we're doing.
So, good evening, board members, Commissioner Weaver. I wanted to say, Board Member Kyler, so just to speak, you mentioned Montgomery County. So just to piggyback off of what Mr. Brown stated, the word is getting out. Just yesterday, I got a call from an assistant principal in Montgomery County. Somehow he was given my name and contact information to call regarding employment opportunities here. He wants to work in Carroll County. That turned into a great 30-minute conversation. I couldn't say enough. So now he cannot wait to come and to just visit. The name that he gave me of the person who gave my information, I don't even know who it is. But like, who gave you my number? But the good thing about that is that we're talking about our school system. Every opportunity that we get, we are sharing the good news about our school system. And for me, this marks year number 13. So yes, I am coming across people who I may not remember their names or their numbers, but I'm thankful that they're taking out information and remembering something that resonates with them in regards to the attraction to come into Carroll County Public Schools. As Ms. Baptist said, my job is to make sure that they stay here once they get here. We don't want to sell them a bill of goods, but Judy having a great experience is not enough. I need for them to experience it on their own. So there's several things that we have been doing in regards to the CCPS. Leadership development. Out of my office, I offer several ways for our minority hires or our teachers and employees of color to get a little bit of leadership opportunities. One of the things that I've been doing is providing mentorship opportunities, either for teacher to teacher or teacher to student. On yesterday, in regards to the Minority Summit, I did selectively invite some minority teachers to come and be mentors and to help with the facilitation. And I did that for two reasons. One, so that our students who have expressed the need and the desire to see teachers that look like them, they could actually see teachers in our county of color that they may not have had exposure to. Secondly, that teacher was just, she's a young teacher at Linton Springs. She happened to be one of my babies at Century High School. She was a student there when I was an assistant principal. She's come up through Carroll County Public Schools and now is a teacher at Linton Springs. And so with her walking around facilitating these group discussions, put her in a place of leadership in which she's excited and cannot wait to team up with other schools to help support students. So just giving them a little bit of responsibility outside of the classroom is what I like to provide. I offer them opportunities to lead up committees for our social gatherings. So just giving them things, whether it's helping with our networking opportunities with our minority employees, whether it's helping out with the culture expo or whether it's helping them become trainers and facilitators for the monthly cultural proficiency trainings that we're having. But what I would like to do is to do some more research in regards to expanding the program and exactly what should that look like. And I've been thinking of things in regards to personnel preparation programs or focusing on leadership development programs or a real true systemic mentoring program and what that would look like. So that's still in the works of what I would like. Also, as a part of the research that I'm doing, I want to implement an employee engagement survey. We mentioned to you all that we would give you that feedback. The survey itself was a great survey. However, we had limited participation. And it could have been the timing that it was at the end of the year and that's when a lot of our first-year teachers are feeling overwhelmed. It's getting the grades together. It's making sure that we're in a good place and I've covered the curriculum like I need to. So I would like to change the method of that data collection to interviews. I feel like interviews are more personal. I can get more one-on-one feedback with teachers. So the goal is to do that in the spring. And again, the purpose is to get an idea of the experiences of our first and second-year teachers of color and how they're doing in the county so that we could be more proactive instead of reactive and not thinking about why we're not retaining them or why they left. So that is one thing that we would like to do. Continuing with what we call housekeeping, we are going to go to each new hire this year. We have a special gift for them, but just stopping by. When they see Shantress, they get scared, AKA Dr. Death. She's messing up my flow.
I had no idea you were that scary, Shantress.
So what we do, so what we do is we put a gift in her hand. So that they know.
Let's please clarify. I am not that scary.
So it's like, HR's here, why? So, but we want them to know, again, that we don't show up because you're in trouble. We don't show up because you're in distress. We're there just to make sure that you're having a wonderful experience and to help. And so that is what we'll continue to do. So we have that on our calendar for next week to visit schools. to visit schools. And the last two things, uh, we've enhanced the training modules, so for those that have to take the Safe Schools training, we've done, um, purposeful research in regards to training that will deal with cultural proficiency and more so understanding what an inclusive environment looks like. Um, and I'm so excited again about the monthly cultural proficiency trainings that have been happening and occurring around our county. Um, and Ms. Baptist and I are also being asked to many schools to have, uh, talks with faculty that have wonderful questions regarding, how do we have courageous conversation? How do we have beneficial courageous conversation with our students and with each other as a staff? They really want to do it right, um, and so we're just happy that they're reaching out to us for support in that manner. Um, so those are just a few of the things that we're doing, hoping that once we recruit them, that we can keep them here.
So, we, we truly have recognized that capturing the information and the perspectives of our employees is essential. And it, to get their experiences, whether it's good or bad, and helps us to improve. So having the one-on-one talks, having the employment engagement surveys will help us have the data to make the changes necessary. Um, in regards to employment and growth, uh, through the efforts of Mr. Anderson and Ms. Jones partnering with, uh, Human Resources and McDaniel College, we're nearing the rollout of a cultural leadership program, Equity and Excellence. So this will give our, our administrator staff an opportunity to become more culturally proficient and become leaders within their school-based communities. We recognize that there is also always areas to improve. So the recruitment, recruiting itself is rebranding itself. Uh, we have, through some research, I have identified that recruiting itself has to have a brand so that individuals can identify with your recruitment brand and your organization's goals right off the bat. So, we are rebranding our recruitment measures and efforts so that we can have our specific brand, recruiting brand, to attract these new millennials. You have to meet the millennials and Generation Y where they are, and you have to be able to recruit them where they are. And so we're utilizing, we do. That's our new generation of employee. So we have to, we're developing recruitment videos, and again, it's employee, overall employment engagement surveys, um, leadership career pathway programs, and we're expanding our international student partnerships. So this is, uh, reaching out to our, we, we had a, had a great meeting, um, opportunity to speak with some of the students at McDaniel, uh, within their minority, uh, their international programs a few weeks ago, and just telling them, explaining to them the benefits of Carroll County public schools. And the, I having the opportunity to tell them about, just the opportunity to substitute. Once you have your credit, or just to come in over, giving our students the opportunity to engage with them even on a substitute level. And so, and we're expanding that student partnership with Towson University. So we, we know that we get our sta, we get our general teachers from there, but we want to expand and get their international students and have them to have some exposure within Carroll County public schools as well. Any questions?
I'm afraid.
Don't, I am, no. I am generally a very nice person.
I would second that.
Thank you, thank you. And I am just have a fiscal eye on their traveling expenses.
Shantress, thank you and team, and I know there's a broader, larger team, uh, beyond the folks that have joined us tonight, appreciate the efforts and the updates and all that you're doing.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, and with that, we'll move on to Section Five, Reports, and the first up is the Staffing Analysis and Class Size Report. Dr. Lockard.
Okay, thank you. So Board Members, as you know, annually, we present our Staffing Analysis and Class Size Report. The report explains our staffing guidelines and measures class size trends over time. Cindy McCabe has joined us to present the overview and major takeaways. However, all our class size numbers are consistent with prior years. Uh, we also have our directors here this evening, uh, who can respond to questions, um, as you have them. So, Ms. McCabe, thank you for coming up even closer.
Yes. Um, so the basic overview, uh, is that, um, for this year, our, um, our average elementary school class, uh, is at twenty-two point oh students, or, yes, twenty-two point oh. Uh, the average, um, for last year was, uh, twenty-one point two. At the elementary level, we don't have any classes over thirty. Um, for middle school, um, the average class size, um, for, for this year is, um, twenty-three point two. And at high school, it's also twenty-three point two, which is statistically very strange, but that's just how it worked out. Um, and you can see there at the middle school and high school, um, how many classes we have over thirty at this time. Um, the good news is that even though our enrollment went up for this school year, we were able to keep class sizes approximately the same, uh, as they have been for the past three years. And we did that by reallocating staff within schools and among our schools. So in some case, if you were, if you were teaching fourth grade last year, you may have had to move down and teach third grade, uh, because that's where more students were as they came in this year. Um, or you may have had to move from one school to another school, uh, to meet, um, a challenge that we had somewhere else. But, um, with moving the staff that we had, we were able to cover all of our class, classes and keep the class sizes pretty much where they have been.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes.
Are we talking about home-based classes or at the elementary level? Are you also talking about math and ELA, or humanities and STEM classes?
Right. So just home-based.
Just home-based. Do you have the count for, because I know that there are some reorganizing on team levels when they.
Right.
The STEM and humanities classes.
Right.
Do you have those counts?
No, for, for our class size, I can get those for you, but for our class size report at the elementary level, we've always just looked at what the homeroom classes look like, and then, you know, within the school day, if they move around or, you know, move from humanities to STEM, um, they always try to keep the class sizes, um, you know, where they should be. We don't have any class sizes over thirty in any of those areas.
None of those academic classes are.
No.
And those might fluctuate a little bit.
Right.
Throughout the year, depending on student needs and.
Exactly. Yeah, we, we move students, or as you remember, we move students around from groupings to groupings based on, um, how quickly they're progressing. Um, so the staffing process, uh, just a little background for you, the staffing process starts for us, um, as soon as, um, we get back from winter break. Uh, so at the elementary level, they start looking at, um, Mr. Kane's projections for, for kindergarten for the next school year. Um, and then they move each grade level up, and then, um, each of the school directors, right now, it would be the elementary director, takes a look and sees where the, um, where the shifts might need to happen in order to cover the class sizes. Um, it happens, uh, in a similar fashion at middle school, and then at high school, uh, they start to, uh, look at who signed up for, for what courses. Um, so that, that's basically the staffing process that we follow every year. Um, and, um, at this point, I'll take any questions that you may have.
And Ms. McCabe, I wanna, I wanna thank you for including in here. I know in the last couple of years, I had asked that we were talking about the class sizes over thirty.
Yes.
And how it's a fairly high number in both middle and high school, number of classes over thirty, but we're saying, okay, but are they excessively large? Like, if we look at the number of classes.
Right.
With more than thirty-five students, are there any of those? And, and so I really appreciate, I saw, I saw that those were added to this report this year.
Yes, we added that based on, um, based on your questions from last school year. And at this time, um, at the, um, middle, middle school level, we have two classes that are over thirty-five at Malory Middle. Um, one is a seventh-grade math class and one is a seventh-grade science class. Um, and we have one at the high school level at Winters Mill, um, and I believe it's an honors English class.
Okay. So I think that these are consistent, when we look at the percentage that are over thirty versus, you know, there's very few, only two.
Right.
Um, over thirty-five, but at twenty-one percent over thirty, and that's consistent with the honors classes, the percentage of honors classes where they can withstand a little bit larger class size versus the developing classes that are, tend to be under twenty in size.
Right, and, and so that's how it balances out. If you have, um, a foundational class that is, you know, has fourteen or fifteen students, then you have to balance that somewhere, and oftentimes, um, that will come in the same grade level at another course level.
Cindy, are the, um, special ed staff members indicated anywhere on any of these reports? I'm trying to find that.
No, the special ed, um, numbers, the special ed staffing is done through our special ed office, and that's done separately.
Right, so we don't include it on this as well?
No, we never have, but again, that's something that I can certainly get for you.
Well, we've been hearing certainly the conversations concerning special ed staff, so it would be good.
I think you've got Nick.
And tell me which report I need to go back to, Mr. Shokny.
So by law, I develop an annual staffing plan, um, that is on our website. I can make sure everyone has a copy of that, but that breaks down in detail the number of special educators that we have at each level, the number of related, related service providers, and the number of support staff that we have. Um, but that breaks it all down. I do that on an annual basis, um, and I, I collect feedback over the course of the year, and we monitor that data on a monthly basis to see where our numbers are, are changing, and then we make adjustments and go from there.
So do you indicate the schools as well when you're breaking that down?
No, do not indicate the schools. And the, the, there is no one true formula for looking at staffing as it relates to special education, but we look at the number of students who receive services in the building, the number of services each one of those students receive, and then the number of hours that that school, you know, collectively has. Um, and we make our adjustments from there, because you have to look at each one individually. You can't look at collectively, you can't look at anyone individually, because you might have a school with a higher number of students, but depending upon what grade they're in, if they're clustered together, or there are students that receive more services out or in of Gen Ed, you have to look at that as well, too. So, um, it's complex, it's ever-evolving, um, and when needs come up, we do our best to, uh, to address those, and, and that gets a little bit complicated, because we don't have extra staff. So a lot of times that, that involves moves and changes and, uh, and some temporary support as, uh, as needed. But our folks are working hard, and they are, they are doing a lot, there's no doubt about it.
And one of the things I did actually go to look at was Freedom Elementary School, because we've been talking about, um, potential issues, ways to alleviate the, the overcrowding at Freedom, because they're at about a hundred and eight percent utilization. So I went to look at this and say, okay, well, does Freedom have some of the largest size classes in the county? And they're not really outliers here, so it, it's not impacting, um, so the fact that they are at a hundred and seven, hundred and eight percent utilization, it's not impacting their class sizes really at that school.
No, not at this point. You see, uh, some of them are slightly higher. I think we have twenty-six in a first-grade class there. Um, but a lot of that was based on enrollment that occurred late, uh, late in the year. So, um, you know, we always cross our fingers and hold our breath in August, um, because we never know who's going to register and when and where, and, um, so some of that did happen at Freedom this year, too.
There wasn't anything that really stood out in, in the data to me as being a problem or something that we had to jump on?
No.
Would you agree with that?
I agree. We, we, um, we look at staffing every week between February and October. So every school turns in a staffing report once a week so that each school director can look at, uh, class sizes and where we are and if we need to make any shifts. Um, so we try to be on that, um, and not wait until there is a problem. So we, we're shifting folks, you know, in, we try to get it all done before teachers go away for, for, um, for the summer. Um, every now and then, something happens in the summer and, and we have to make a change after that, but that's an emergency situation. We try to get it all balanced out before teachers leave.
Board members, any other questions? Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and we'll move on to the construction report. Dr. Lockard.
Board Members, this is the regular monthly construction report. I don't have any major updates. Uh, we are still awaiting the cost analysis for the additional section, uh, to be repaired for Westminster High School's facade that I informed you of last time. We did have a slight issue with stormwater runoff at the South Carroll High School solar array. I wanted Mr. Marks, there he is, um, to give a quick update, um, on that, and also let you know we're moving forward with the curriculum aspect of that project as well, and then we'll certainly respond to any questions you might have about the construction report. Jim?
Good evening, thank you. Um, the, uh, yes, we did, we had our rain events. Everybody remembers how wet Halloween was with that, uh, eight-thirty scare rolling through the county. Um, we were, um, a couple days before that, on the twenty-seventh, Sunday, we also had an amount, large amount of rain. And so they inundated our temporary facilities. We have stormwater management at the base of the solar field, and it's not fully growing grass yet, because it just got completed, um, but we're going to have to go in and repair that, because those storms overwhelmed that, and that happens. It happens in construction. We, we have temporary stormwater management facilities all the time, you know, get inundated with a large amount of water, and we go in and we repair it. Um, we're working with the county. We even came up with a, a new stabilized mat that our engineers worked with, uh, discussed with the county Bureau of Resource Management folks this week, and they just approved that. So we're, we're looking forward to installing that matting in there that's gonna keep it stabilized throughout the winter, uh, even without grass on it. So we're gonna start installing that immediately. We, we also had some water get underneath the bleachers at South Carroll. That was on Thursday, that Thursday evening Halloween storm. Uh, we, the school notified us, uh, Mr. Novatny, the next morning. We raced down there, we had our engineers from Columbia and, uh, project managers from Rockville show up. Uh, we had three civil engineers there staring at it, and the one of record agreed with all of us that they could still have the game, load up the bleachers over top for that evening's game. So within three hours or so before the game, you know, we confirmed that everything was fine, it wasn't that bad. Um, and, uh, so they actually repaired that today. So that's fully repaired, and blessed, so we're happy that's moving, so. It's about it with the storm.
I, I, you have, so, I was the one that went to South Carroll for the Veterans Day breakfast, and I sat with Timmy, he goes, "Did you hear?" And I go, "No," you know, that's how, that's how things happen. But now who pays for that, um, the cleanup and the mess-up and the water? Are we, are we?
They're gonna pay for it.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
That's, that was my concern, and it's like, who's paying for that do, bottom dollar of that?
Correct. No, they have no, they're repairing it, they're gonna finish it and build it per plans and specs.
Take care of the hockey field.
Make sure the inspectors and us and everybody's taking care of it. Field hockey field will be repaired.
Okay.
They'll probably have to sod that when we can get sod to get in there. We don't wanna try to germinate seed to be ready for the, for the spring.
Yeah.
So they'll, they're already acknowledged, they'll take care of all of it at their expense.
Yeah, that's how it all happens. I was like, oh, yeah, I went down to visit, and then, "Did you hear?" And I was like, and then I went to Mr. O'Neil, and I, and then he said, and then he went to talk to you, and I was like.
These happen, and we, it's not in the report, because it was after our deadline of submitting it. I think I turned the report in on October twenty-fifth was our deadline.
Yeah.
So that's why.
Well, thank you, thank you so much.
Okay.
Really appreciate it.
And we appreciate it, because that was the first thing that came to my mind as well when we heard about the incident, we're like, oh, who?
Who's paying?
Who, who covers the cost of the maintenance and the repairs, and so.
Yeah, they're covering that.
Bottom dollar.
Mm-hmm.
Right. And there's a lot, there's talk of a lot of other solar projects around the county, and I think that it probably makes sense to use this as a pilot project and, you know, talk about the lessons learned. I mean, these are, these are things that we're already finding out about the project that we can.
Sure.
Apply to other projects.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, and, well, and this with the stormwater management piece, I mean, this is stuff we deal with every day. Every type of project we have, uh, incorporates some form or shape of stormwater management, and with construction and storms, we have issues sometimes, but we're there to take care of it.
Because it is on a hill.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
Yeah, right.
Absolutely.
Board Members, were there questions about other projects on the construction report?
I was gonna say, I missed an opportunity tonight with the robotics students here. I have the design team. have the design team, the management team. We could have designed them a state-of-the-art robotics facility at Career Tech for full-time. I know Mr. Echols and Ms. Donovan's wheels were spinning.
Where's Phil?
But that would be something really neat to, to do for them, for development, jobs, everything. We could have done it by the end of the board meeting.
He heard you.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're excited that they're here, and they'll obviously present in a few minutes.
Okay, so with that, we'll move on to Section Six, Public Participation, but I do not believe we've received any additional blue cards.
No, I've not received any blue cards.
Is there anyone in the room that would like to participate at this point, to fill out a blue card? No? Okay. Well, then we will move on to action items. And the first up, board members, I need a motion for the approval of personnel appointments. Moved by Dr. Dorsey, second by Ms. Pataglia. Dr. Lockard.
Okay, board members, I have three, um, appointments I'm bringing for your approval. These are all acting roles, so they're temporary. Uh, the first is recommending Ashley Bumel to Acting Assistant Principal at Sykesville Middle, Anne Marie Byrd to Acting Assistant Principal at Freedom Elementary School, and Kristin Hoffman to Acting Principal at Carroll Springs School. Again, these are temporary in nature due to, due to, uh, certain leaves that are very short-lived, so.
Board members, any questions? No? So with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor? It passes unanimously. Thank you. And, board members, I need a motion for the approval of Personnel Action Items.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Dorsey, second by Ms. Pataglia. Dr. Lockard.
Okay, board members, also in your, um, packets are the approval of Personnel Action Items I'm bringing for you this evening. Three new hires, one released from contract, one broken contract, and one leave of absence.
Board members, any questions? No? All right, then I call for the vote. All those in favor? It passes unanimously. Thank you. And now we need a motion for the approval of the Award of Bids.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Pataglia.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kyler. Dr. Lockard.
Okay, board members, there are only two items on the Award of Bids this evening. The first is a welding simulator for the Career and Technology Center. This equipment allows students to have the virtual experiences in the program to replicate, replicate real-life job training. And so I want to make sure that we answer the question, what'll happen if we buy this equipment with the Career and Tech Center modernization that, uh, project that's moving forward? Well, this and other appropriate equipment will be retained and used in the future modernized building. And for this item in particular, the space in the project was designed knowing that this purchase was going to come, um, so we're well-prepared for, for this piece of equipment in the future. The second item in the Award of Bids is a contract for a Train the Trainer Skills Session to support our Sources of Strength Program as we continue to expand this very valuable program to more of our, our schools. I know you're familiar with Sources of Strength, and we're happy to be able to continue to build our own capacity as we expand that program in more schools.
Okay. Board members, any questions? Well, I appreciate the comment about, um, item number one, because that was, that was like, okay, have we factored this into the design specs? And I'm glad to hear that we have. Um, and the second for the Sources of Strength, so we, we are planning to eventually extend this to all middle and high schools, correct?
Yes, I think Jim was not here anymore, Rodriguez. Um, and so we are planning to expand that. I, I would be looking to Jim for the timeline of that, but I don't know what exactly, the exact timeline. Is it in, is it in the, uh?
You can read it.
Oh, I can't see it from where I'm sitting. Currently, three middle schools and one high school with two more middle schools and two more high schools in the, in the next school year to come.
Right, yeah, we, oh, there he is. Hey, you went out and found him. Jim, the question was, and we recognize where we're, where we currently are and where we're expanding Sources of Strength.
Sure.
That's written in the, uh, in the Award of Bid. The, uh, the question was about, is the intent to get to all high school and middle school?
That is correct.
Right.
Within the next two years.
Okay, within two years, okay.
Within the next two years. That's the goal.
Right. So this is a thirty-five thousand dollar expenditure now, but there will be additional future expenditures to get into the additional schools, correct?
This particular monies is designated to have a Train the Trainer model, so we're hoping to be able to, to actually train about thirty-five to forty individuals, so that will be at least a representative of each of our middle and high schools, as well as maybe some central staff or some community members, to be able to fully understand the Sources of Strength model.
Okay, so we wouldn't have any future expenses associated with Train the Trainer, because we're going to cover that in this round?
Correct, and then, correct. And then we're going to be able to have those individuals who are then going to be able to expand the program along with the, the four of us that have already currently been to a Train the Trainer, you know, conference and being able to, uh, to be trained.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much.
That'll teach you to hang around, huh?
All right, board members, any other questions? No? Okay. Then with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor? It passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, board members, I need a motion for the approval of the two thousand nineteen ESA Consolidated Master Plan.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Pataglia.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kyler. Dr. Lockard.
Okay, I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Anderson.
Sure, absolutely. Um, so this is actually, in two thousand nineteen, was the first year that the state moved to the ESA Consolidated Strategic Plan, historically known as the Master Plan, and believe it or not, it, that's consolidated. Um, with that said, um, the, this is an annual plan that we are required to submit to the state. Um, we had submitted the first draft, uh, about a month ago for review. I'm proud to say, um, that this was co-authored by twenty-plus individuals in our school system, formatted by Dr. Hart, and when we submitted it, we only had three clarifying questions, uh, from the state. Dr. Lockard informed me after meeting with other superintendents that, um, some, some districts were receiving, um, plenty of questions, well above three. Um, so I want to commend the staff for putting all this together. Um, the other piece I wanted to share was that this is a compilation of our resources, our efforts, and it's really an opportunity for us to self-actualize, um, our efforts and where it is that we need to continue to grow and become better. Um, so that self-actualization, I think, is, is what was really, really, I think, helpful through all of our different departments. Um, we are, um, to submit this for final, uh, submission, um, on Friday, um, and, um, I want to publicly thank Drew Sexton for his support in regards to the financial pieces of it. Um, obviously, Michelle Capels as well, Dr. Kendra Hart for facilitating it.
Board members, questions?
No questions.
Ms. Herbert.
All right. Thank you for all that literature. It was only like three hundred pages. All right. I, I just have a couple of things. What, what is real-world application? What, 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 can you relate that to me and everyone else?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I mean, it's, it's essentially what we all strive for in our classes, when, when the student says to us, "When am I ever going to use this?" So how is it that we are going to formulate lesson and develop lessons and curriculum content to show the value, if you will, to our students for real-world application?
Okay. Then, how were those TSI schools selected?
Yeah, the TSI schools, um, selected were identified by the state of Maryland. Uh, those, those schools, we have four schools. Um, Westminster High School was a special education school. Winters Mill High School's a special education school. Uh, West Middle School's an ESOL school, and Friendship Valley is a special education school. Um, Nick and Pam have worked closely with our directors, Tom and Steve Wernick and, and Eric King, to develop the plans. We are actually going to be, um, so we had a, a, um, a requirement from the state to develop a plan. We are reconvening, I believe, in the month of December to check on progress with that plan.
Okay. And I went to your performance academies, and I usually, I went to the GNT.
Yeah.
And I read in there that recommendations by teachers or parents, and I thought we were trying to move towards more data-driven.
Yes, so...
I saw that. I was just really surprised to see that in there.
Yeah, so, uh, uh, the recommendations came from the program evaluation. So we took recommendations when we had community town halls, those types of things. Through the program evaluation, we met with those, uh, Mr. Wernick facilitated the conversation over three months. We heard from all those teachers, and that's where we got that information. But yes, we're also using data decision-making as well as we're moving through, but that was a huge piece we were very proud of in regards to looking at our program presently and how we, what things need to take place from there.
Okay, okay, because I was just getting like more, more data-driven, and I wasn't trying to pay...
You're correct on that. We're bringing, that's going to be part of our Pillar One update as well in January. You guys asked for more data on that.
All right, yes. Okay. Now, um, for professional development, is that going to be for principals, supervisors, directors, or, or is it just to certain areas?
Yes. So it's, um, so it's capacity building across, across all levels of, of, of the organization. Um, and so one of the things that we, as we were putting this plan together, one of the things that we must be able to do is start to look at how we're building capacity of our leaders as well as our teachers. I just sat in with, uh, principals this morning with Tom Hill and, and our middle school principals, and, and we're getting a lot of feedback, hey, we're moving fast, and it's all good stuff, but we can't continue to implement the kind of professional development or professional, uh, learning model that we've had in the past, because we're pulling out a lot of folks, and we're dealing with substitutes and, and the lack thereof. So it's all levels, and we're figuring out different ways to, to provide that.
I like that segue to substitutes, because, um, are we doing due diligence for students when the sub is not certified, like in a special math class?
Right.
Or special science class? What, how are we handling that? Because, you know, I know things happen, but
Yeah.
what are we feeling?
Well, I can speak specifically to it. As a principal in Anna Rundle not long ago, where I would be splitting classes because we couldn't find subs. This is an issue across the state of Maryland. I think Teresa would agree with me, is that trying to find a substitute to cover a class, let alone an elementary class, or a content, more sophisticated content-level course at high schools, is even harder. So we've started those conversations at the executive team level to look at, you know, what are our current requirements for a substitute? What are some other strategies that we can put in place? But I think, uh, Mr. O'Neill and I would agree that, you know, oftentimes, when the economy's doing well, it's hard to find folks to come in and do that work for you. Um, this is a, this is a crisis we're dealing with, just like bus drivers across the state.
Right, I'm seeing that, you know, and as a parent, I, I would be horrified that here your child signed up for some special chemistry class or a special math class, and then we don't have a certified teacher.
Because it's, it's, first of all, it's hard to find math
Yeah.
and science teachers, and then to find a substitute for that that would be qualified. It's almost, I wouldn't say it's non-existent, but it's very difficult.
Okay, and when I was reading through this, I want to make sure I read this right. We have twenty percent low-income children, is that correct?
Yeah, we're about, we're, we're
Nineteen, something?
Yeah, we're approaching twenty percent, yes.
Okay.
It's the lowest, I believe, in the state.
That's, okay, that's
Yeah.
what was my next point then. Well, thank you for doing this, and it was a lot of reading. And I did try to read it.
A lot of writing.
And I'm hot lying.
And clearly, this was a, a massive effort.
Yes. Whoever did all this work.
No, it was a cumulative effort, but I want to put a lot of, um...
This is unbelievable.
...the appreciation on our finance and Drew and Michelle, and she, she, she really did a ton of work with Dr. Hart in making sure it happened.
People cannot relate to a Sears catalog, but this is what the Sears catalog looked like. I just wonder if you all know that. Except they had really cool pictures of Christmas toys and
I'm saying next year, I want the whole.
bicycles and clothes, and you could even buy a sofa, so. Thank you.
Well, I definitely saw very strong parallels between this document and our strategic plan that we put together.
Thank you for saying that.
So I appreciate that fully, and I just wanted to ask, like, so I, I probably didn't get through as much of this in detail as I would have liked, um, but do you see this diverging in any way from our strategic plan?
No.
No?
No, and here's what I mean by that. One of the comments I wanted to get out tonight was, although this is a, an enormous amount of work, but when you sit down and you write, you know, pieces of it, or you ask folks to write pieces of it, it's the language we've been talking about in regards to the four pillars. It's, honestly, it's, it's, um, we're very fortunate, because I've had the opportunity to work with other school districts, and we met to just look at each other's plans as we went through this process, and we were in a far better situation, or circumstance, than our neighbors were, um, because of the way that we've developed our strategic plan. And I just think it's ironic that that, that's what the state's calling it. It's no longer the master plan as we once knew it. It's now a consolidated strategic plan. So, um, it was, when writing this and putting this together, it was the work that we're doing every single day. Not that, not that the master plan wasn't, but this was something where we were able to literally take from our strategic plan and put in, and then justify it.
That's excellent. I'm so glad to hear that, and, and in a way, we're really leading
We are.
the other counties in the way that we've put our strategic plan together. So that's fabulous to hear.
We have a lot of work to do yet, and, and the details and, and getting to those, those pieces that we often hear from our community in, in regards to the, the criticisms, and we know that we're getting there. Um, but it's, it was, it was, um, a team effort to put it together.
Excellent. So, so you had said there were three questions that the state had come back with.
I knew you were going to ask me that. Yeah, so, um, yeah. So I believe one was within GNT, um, and it was really just, and I, and I don't have the folks here this evening, but I believe it was more like, um, uh, some language that we used. It wasn't the process or our approach. Um, I think there might have been, uh, another one, um, in regards to, thank you, thank you, Drew. Teacher induction was a piece in there. And so they were very minor, and so we were kind of like waiting, still waiting. Um, and then when we started getting those in, we were happy to respond to those. They were immediately taken care of, revised, and now ready for final submission.
Okay, great. So those have all been addressed in this document before us?
Yes.
And this is ready to go?
That's correct.
Okay. Fantastic.
Mm-hmm.
Board members, any other questions? All right. Thank you, Jason. Oh, I'm sorry, Jackson.
So you said, so two hundred ninety pages is the consolidated version, correct?
That's correct, Jackson.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was
Yeah.
reading that correctly.
If you want, you can stop by tomorrow. We can walk through it and...
That's okay.
Okay.
I'll take my AP Psych test tomorrow.
I never had a chance to do that, so, yeah.
All right. So, board members, now I need a motion for the approval of the temporary construction easement with Carroll County Government for the stormwater management modifications at Shiloh Middle School.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Pataglia. Second by Dr. Dorsey. Dr. Lockard.
Okay, board members, this is a temporary construction easement that the county's requesting to perform some storm, talked about stormwater a couple of times tonight now. Stormwater modification on the Shiloh Middle property. It's been reviewed by our legal counsel. We have coordinated with the county to ensure there won't be any impacts to the programs at the school.
Board members, any questions? Commissioner Weaver.
If, if I may, uh, it was just, um, they had, uh, resource has, um, some money to put into redoing this stormwater pond. It's not working presently at the time, and with the board's permission, they can go in and, uh, put it back in good, good order and, uh, no cost to the board, so.
Okay, okay, excellent.
It's an opportunity.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, and we have no safety concerns or anything like that? I know, Ms. Pataglia, you had, um, asked questions about the, the last couple of times that we had the, the easements.
Yeah. I'm sorry about this.
Okay, all right. All right, board members, any other questions? No? Then I will call for the vote. All those in favor? It passes unanimously. Thank you.
We didn't vote on D, did we?
You are correct. We did not vote on D. So we will go back, and, so, board members, we, did I say that for seven E, that passes unanimously?
Yeah.
Okay, so, for seven D, we did not call for the vote. Uh, we had a motion and a second. Uh, so now I call for the vote on the approval of the two thousand nineteen ESA Consolidated Master Plan. All those in favor? That also passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Kyler.
I didn't want to have to read it again next month.
Want to bring it back for a second reading?
It wouldn't be the consolidated version either. It'd be the, the whole version.
The extended version.
Yeah.
Okay, now we need a motion for the approval of the design development documents for the Carroll County Career and Technology Center project.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Kyler.
Second.
Second by Ms. Pataglia. Dr. Locker.
Okay. Board members, we've had folks waiting patiently here this evening. Thank you. I'm going to make a few comments and then we'll get into it.
Mr. Marks.
Yeah. So, as we've discussed throughout various updates on the project and at, at length at the October meeting, we remain on the timeline with the Career and Technology Center project. This meeting was identified as the time we would bring for your approval, the required design development documents for the project. The design development documents and forms in the packet are required by us for submission to the IAC. As was noted in the cover sheet, in the agenda, the design development document represents that we are approximately 35% along the way to the construction phase. As you can see, the work has progressed since you approved the schematic design and it's, it's quite involved. Given the volume and detail, I know that many of you have been into the office to review the documents, the background materials, ask questions of the staff, the architect, our construction folks, the engineers, and we appreciate all those who have been able to do that. I also wanted to note, as we discussed at length, in October, we're providing an updated estimate for the project. Reaching this stage allows for the first estimate since you awarded the construction manager on board. This latest estimate from the construction manager includes significantly more engineering design work, furniture and equipment estimates, and contingency. And just as we talked about at the last board meeting in October, we expect that estimate to continue to be refined until the time of the construction documents. I want to let you know that this updated estimate is below the original estimate. And even though this will continue to be refined as we go, it would not and cannot exceed the local commitment, the $34 million already in the county's plan. One other point, an overall point I wanted to make was to take a moment to clarify the Westminster water allocation for this project. So, we briefly discussed that item relative to this project in September when we had the East Middle work session. We clarified that staff here was discussing this issue with city staff and planning was well underway. Our staff members have been meeting with, met with city staff, had some phone conferencing as well. The city, the Westminster city staff have been aware that we are projecting a decrease in water usage with the modernization project due to more efficient and modern systems. And now that we've reached the design development stage, enough design work is complete that we've been able to forward the actual water usage calculations to the city staff. We do indeed calculate that the modernized facility will use a few thousand fewer gallons per day than the current facility does. The city staff and health department have reviewed those calculations and verified approval for that aspect of the project. We have our architect, Mr. Hagan, who I know you've met many times here this evening. Mr. Hagan's been kind enough to provide an overview and touch on the highlights of the design development documents and I'll have him do so and then we'll respond to any questions. So, with that, Mr. Hagan.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Appreciate you having me back again to talk about this exciting project. With me tonight, I have a few guests that I don't usually have with me here, but are part of our design team from MK Engineering, Emily Dean, who is our civil engineer. And then we have Jordan Duval and Greg Drenning, who are mechanical electrical engineers from Auburn Engineering. And then this handsome guy here next, been sitting next to me all night is Jonathan Dickinson and he is our construction manager from Gilbain. So, they're here to answer any questions that you may have that are more of technical nature that I can't touch on this evening. I just have a brief presentation just to give you an update from where we were back in May and then I'm here to answer questions. So, please stop me along the way if you'd like to get into more detail if I go too fast. Quick agenda, we're going to just cover these six topics tonight, similar to what we did back in May. In terms of the size of our building, we're still tracking a very efficient project. And in terms of timelines, we've brought Gilbain on board. They've been looking at it and agree with us that our 48-month construction schedule is appropriate for this size project. The other thing I'd like to mention is that we continue to maintain that all programs are going to be housed inside the building going forward. We're not going to have portable classrooms for programs. We're not going to have to walk outside to, you know, outbuildings. Everything will be within the confines of the new, new and renovated construction. So, one of the things I've touched on a few times and I want to keep reiterating this because I can't stress the importance of it enough, is the amount of meetings we've been able to have with staff, the staff of the school in particular. And you can see, I've listed the dates up there. It's been over 13 days of full-day meetings, talking with each staff member about their spaces and what their requirements are for their program, that we get it right. And it's a unique thing that most school systems, and I hope they're listening tonight, they don't do it to this extent. And I encourage them to do so because the information we've gotten has been invaluable. So, it's just been a great process and I want to thank everybody who's allowed us to be a part of that. In addition to that, we've been having bi-weekly meetings at the school. And it's our team meeting with our engineers, our construction team, and, and all the staff members from Carroll County that are involved in the project. And it's, it's a chance for us to work through issues, problem solve, but also it gives us access to staff members within the school. And that's been a very, very helpful resource to us. I'm not going to read the list of the plan updates since May because I'm actually going to touch on those when we get to the graphics in a second, but things have not drastically changed since we visited with you in May, but we have made a few changes. And so, I'll touch on those on the plans as we go forward. I'm going to start with the, the ground floor plan and this is, as you, as you know now the building, this is where the transportation programs are housed. We are proposing to remove the 87 addition, which has the heavy equipment program in it, the welding program, and the HVAC program. And in, by removing those programs, we're going to propose a couple of small additions. And what you see on the right side of this plan, I'm sorry, I can't really point to it very easily, but the right corner there is a new addition for heavy equipment. And what this will allow is all of the transportation programs to be housed on the lower level around a, a transportation yard that will be enclosed with gates and fences so that students can go between programs but stay within the confines of that, that transportation yard. So, there'll be a nice synergy between the, the three major programs there. On the left side of this plan is our, part of our addition and that's where the auto tech program is being relocated to. And that's consistent with what you saw back in May. So, that really hasn't changed. But the heavy equipment piece is the new change on this level. So, moving up to the main level, the, the piece to the left of, of the plan is, is similar to what you saw before and that is our three-story addition. So, the auto tech piece is below this that you just saw. And then as you come up, our new main entry is on the left-hand side, which is similar to what you saw back in May. And then we have a student entry that will enter into this addition on the lower level or in the lower portion of this plan here. And within that addition on this level are all of our retail programs. So, you'll first enter into a secure vestibule. Administration will be, will greet you. And then you will get checked in and go into the building and you will have access, direct access to cosmetology, to culinary arts, and to fashion. And those are the programs that we call the more retail component because that has the outside public that want to come in and use those programs. So, that way, we're not pushing them through the building, we're keeping them confined to, to the front half of the building. We also have our cafeteria located there. The rest of the building then is, is our renovation piece. And as I mentioned, that 87, when that 87 addition comes down, we're proposing a, a small addition on the lower right corner of this plan for carpentry and masonry. And that, I'm going to show you how that benefited us on the site from a cost standpoint in a moment. But by building that addition, we're able to move the, the construction yard from the front of the building where it currently is, was planned, to around the corner down by those two major programs that need that outdoor space. So, it's, it's created an efficiency and actually saved us some site costs that I'll show you in a second. The rest of it then is just a, is just a snowball effect of, of renovation pieces. So, when we move into this, this three-story addition, which will be our first phase, then that will allow us to renovate the rest of the spaces and then move folks into those homes. So, what we're trying to do is minimize the moves by coming up with a very strategic plan of how we move programs into the new addition and then we don't have to move other programs out of their home until their new home is ready. So, minimal disruption to students is our goal here.
If I can do one question on that.
Yeah.
Sorry, I got a cold. The courtyard.
Yes.
That is essentially the only open, unoccupied area on this floor. That's the area where we used to eat?
Correct.
And what's the purpose of it now?
Well, oh, no, I'm sorry. Where you see, I think students do go out there, but no, that's not the dining.
That's not.
No, dining is actually further to your right in this plan. Yes, sorry. That courtyard exists today.
Courtyard's the same courtyard.
It'll stay the same.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct.
What's it going to be used for? What was the purpose?
Well, the purpose is it brings natural light into those, those rooms that are kind of buried in the middle of the building. I do believe students have been allowed to go out there in the past. So, for, for eating or other purposes. We have also talked about for the criminal justice program, maybe utilizing that to go out and, and do training programs out in that courtyard. So, we're trying to program that to make it a useful space.
That's what I'd heard.
Yep, exactly. And then just moving up to the, to the upper level, which is only in the addition, of course, this really has not changed since we last met, but this is the allied health programs, the print production and the video production spaces are up here. We've tweaked the spaces. We've been working on the adjacencies with staff, but generally, these programs have always been there and we really haven't changed that too much since we last saw you.
I have a couple of questions. So, this was something that I actually kind of heard a couple of years ago and I'm going to actually echo it because I'm even thinking expense-wise. The print shop is on the second floor. Lots of that equipment is extremely heavy. What is the additional expense? Because you're going to have to have some type of steel reinforcement there. So, personally, I would think the print shop would be better on the first floor.
Fair enough. So, it's actually a great question. We're, we're, I don't have my structural engineer here this evening, but he's actually sizing all the members for the building as we go through now. That's kind of the next, his next step. So, all the structural pieces are, are being determined what sizes are required based on not only the print production programs, but all the programs. And that includes slab thickening on the ground level, et cetera. So, as we go through that process, just like we've been doing for the whole project, if we find that there's an anomaly that's costing us more money, then we're going to reevaluate that. And then we will certainly decide if we need to make a change there. But as of now, we don't foresee that as an issue, but we continuously reevaluate everything as we go. And if, if there's a cost implication, we will certainly address it so that we aren't spiking costs unnecessarily.
Okay.
And I would kind of hope, particularly if it's not a wild cost, you, you want this building flexible for the future. I'd hate to see the second floor so that something couldn't go up there later if it had to.
Of course.
Now, my question, you, you show on the middle there, roof below. On the left, you say open to dining below. Isn't that also a roof?
It is, yeah. And that's, it used to be open to below and that's, we just haven't updated that note, so I apologize, but it actually is a roof now. So, when you look out the windows of, of print production and video, you're actually looking onto a roof and not looking in the space below.
How did all the snow load and all the stuff? That's got to be the most critical area for that stuff between these two, right?
Correct, yeah. So, one of the reasons that we actually ended up kinking the building was to address the site issue, but it also helped us with snow loads to keep the snow off of the existing building. Because if we build a, a addition that goes above the existing roof and snow goes up against it, then, then you start spending a lot of money reinforcing that roof. And we didn't want to spend that money unnecessarily. So, we were able to step, step the building and, and do some very simple changes to, to how the plan works to accommodate that. So, does that answer your question?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
And one more question I had is, there was discussion, I thought at one time, about a plumbing program being included. And I do not see that.
Yes. As, as of today, there is no plumbing program in, in the proposed program. I think that's a future program.
So, one of the things we're trying to accomplish with this is to create spaces that can be used in the future. Right now, we don't have a plumbing program. We don't have a plumbing teacher, so we're not going to have a space designated for that yet. But when we move all the pieces around, we will end up with some empty spaces and so then we can consider which program is most important to fill those and plumbing, of course, is high on my list. So, if you look at the current collision repair space-
Okay.
-which will, in the renovation, collision repairs moving into the main building, that space will become empty and is something that we can use, consider for that. And there's some other smaller spaces also we'll be able to consider. But for right now, we didn't want to design a space that we knew was going to be empty, but we are going to leave some spots for flexibility for the future.
So, so that lower level, the collision paint booth is not there?
No, that, well, that's something that we've been discussing as a possible alternate. If we can move the paint booth into the main building, we'll want to do that, but it's going to depend a lot on the cost. And of course, we want to be very mindful of that.
Uh huh, okay.
Okay.
So, moving over to the site plan briefly, I mentioned earlier that by taking down that 87 addition, we're able to then also create a small addition for carpentry and masonry on the right corner of the building there. What we had originally been proposing was to take the existing bus loop and move it into the parking lot so that we could create a larger construction yard in front of the building. But by moving those two programs around to the end and creating, you can see it there in, in the bottom right corner, a larger construction yard, it allowed us to leave the bus loop in place and save those costs. So, we're not having to unnecessarily move that now. We're still going to have some construction yard space in the front of the building for some of the other programs, but it doesn't need to be quite as large. It'll be basically what you have today. So, I think that was a, a good value engineering discussion that we, we evolved out of a lot of talk through our meetings that we've been having.
I was surprised to hear it, but there's less drivers than there are bus riders. The drivers will all be in that main front parking lot and enter through the same place the buses do. And at that age, you don't have drop-offs like you do at the little schools, so, so that's, that's all of the students come in that same entrance.
Pretty much.
Oh, except for the ones from Westminster. Yeah, I forgot about those, those kids.
The other, the other component I want to touch on is we've been also having a dialogue with Westminster High School and obviously, there's going to be some impacts to, to their programs, particularly pertaining to these parking lots on the side. So, parking lot E is going to be modified so that we have, part of it will be for dedicated to career and tech and then the other piece will be shared or more dedicated to Westminster High. But the marching band uses that. So, when we originally came up with the design for this, we had a lot of islands and such in there and through discussions with them, we've pulled all of that out and created basically a flat surface that'll be striped, that the marching band can have access to that once it's reconstructed, sort of accommodate them. So, it's that kind of dialogue that continues to go on that has been very helpful to, to us as we designed this. And then-
I'm sorry, Mr. Hagan, there's, there's some portables over here on the bottom right.
Sure.
Are those, those remaining? Because I thought we said that we were going to get rid of all of those.
Great question. So, that's for construction. So, those are the existing four portables that are on site now. We have to move them out of the way to do the construction, so we're going to place them there temporarily.
Okay.
And then those programs will then eventually move into the building.
Okay, great.
Yeah, great question. And then we're starting to now look at what the building will be when you approach the site. site. And this is actually, as you come on to the campus and make that right over towards career and tech, this will be the image that you will see. And we've accomplished a couple of things here. I think we've created a new face to the building, which was a goal that we had set out when we started the project. And we've also are trying to create a tech feel to the building with the materials we're using. But I also want to point out, the materials we're using are standard building materials that you used on Mount Airy Middle School most recently. It's masonry, it's metal panels, it's built-up roof. So we're not doing anything out of the ordinary, it's just how we're using them, just to create the look for the building. So that'll be your main face to the building, and then when students get off the bus, this will be the view that they see. So, addition is to your left, and then, to your right, it's kind of hidden behind a screen wall there now, but that's the existing building tucked in there. And then, the screen wall that's coming out on your right side there, that is our construction yard for the programs that will remain along the front face of the building. So that'll be a secure yard for them, that'll have gates, lockable gates, in that students can enter that, but not have people enter from the parking lot into their space. So, we're thinking through that security piece as we go along as well. The other thing, it's a little hard to see because it's washed out here, but the, we're also trying to bring some of the red color of the existing building into the materials of the addition, so that the two tie together and we don't look like we're just tacking something new on, but that there's, that it's linked together and feels like it's all one. And then, this starts to get into complications about how we're going to move everybody around for our phasing, so I'm just going to touch on this lightly, but if you have more detailed questions, I'm happy to answer it. But as I mentioned, the first phase is going to be about two years, and that'll be constructing the addition on the left side. Once that's in place and we can move and occupy that, then that frees up a lot of space within the building. So, those spaces that are then free will start the domino effect of our renovation piece. So we'll start renovating, and we've blocked them out by colors there, and then we've put some durations on there, just so you can get a sense of the order that these things will start to fall. But this is, it's a very complicated puzzle that we've been working through with many, many meetings, so that we, again, as I mentioned, we minimize the disruption, we minimize the utility shutdowns, and all the different components that go into renovating a space. And I think we've got a really good, solid plan here that everybody feels comfortable with. And that, of course, carries on to the lower level as well. And then, lastly, just touching on cost estimate, as it was mentioned, we now have a cost estimate from Gilbane, which you see on the right-hand column there. And we're tracking within about 1% of where we were back in May. So I feel very good about where we are in terms of costs. We didn't see any major spikes. You know, I always get nervous as we're developing these drawings and putting more scope into there, is that going to spike the costs? And what we found was, no, it really didn't. We're really tracking in a good manner. And we're constantly looking at ways to value engineer this as we go. We don't wait for the cost estimate. As I mentioned, that whole scenario with the bus loop came out of just design meetings and us discussing. So we're being very cognizant of your costs and trying to keep that low, so that we're not overspending your dollars.
Design and construction management really went down?
Well, so that was a budget number?
I know.
Yeah, and our fees and Jonathan's fees were actually lower than what was budgeted, so we actually, there was actually money left over that can be reallocated.
Thank you.
So, yeah, you're welcome.
Sorry, Mr. Hagan, I was looking at these numbers because I remembered the May estimate being in the $67 million range, and I made a note to look on page 80 for the cost, and now, I'll be darned if I cannot find page 80 in this document. There we go. So, on page 80 in this document, it's showing a preliminary construction budget of $69.5 million, which is different than these numbers appear, so I'm just trying to understand how all this ties together.
Yeah, so I think the $69.5 you're referring to, let me find that here real quick. I believe that is just, that is just construction cost. So that does not account for your FF and E, your design costs. So, this, the number that you're seeing on that page is relating back to what the state is looking, how they fund their dollars. They don't fund the FF and E and the design, so they'd want that pulled out. So when we do the state form, we have to pull those numbers out.
Okay.
So that's, yeah, that's the difference there.
So, in essence, this has nothing to do with what it's going to cost, it's a finance budgeting operation with the state and the county, correct?
Essentially, yeah.
I just want to thank you all, because I did enjoy my time, and you all were very helpful. And when I looked at the designs, it came very clear, and it was very, it was very clear that it took a lot of teachers, a lot of time, and they designed their own area. And when you go into the classrooms there, I know, as soon as you make a left in Mr. Blizzard's room, he already has his whole area designed, ready to go. And I know there's more of those that have already done that, and they're taking a lot of pride in this. So, thank you, and it's going to be a very exciting project, and boy, do we ever need it.
Yep.
You make them part of the process, and then they don't complain, right?
Exactly. Amazing how that works, yes.
I do want to echo those comments, and the collaborative effort that's been going on here is really amazing, and I think that we're going to see that materialize in the end product. So it's really exciting to see everybody working together and the outcome of what this is going to look like. I did have one question about, so, and I appreciate, Dr. Lockard, how you had said that the $34 million that's for the local funding, that's a not-to-exceed number, and we know that through all of these calculations. So, you know, we've made this statement many times along the way, right, that we can stop and change scope or whatever, but we know that we're not getting anywhere close to that $34 million yet, right, based on the amount of state participation that we would get. But I just wanted to make sure that, you know, everybody understands that $34 million is, it's not a, that's an estimate, no, that's a not-to-exceed number for county participation. So I just appreciate you making that comment upfront. And I did have one follow-up question on the water issue, and I appreciate the additional comments that you made at the beginning. But I had said that I would talk to Mayor Joe Dominic, and that was primarily surrounding the East Middle project about water. But the way, my understanding from him when we talked, is that it's really about the water allocation, and it's all square footage-driven by MDE calculations, right? So I'm trying, I just want to make sure that we're not missing anything, right, because we're moving from 112,000 square foot existing space to 208,000 square feet, I believe are the numbers.
Right, right.
And so, we're increasing by about 90,000 square feet. I just want to make sure, like, I know that we're saying we're going to be more efficient and probably end up using the same or even less water overall, but the way that Mayor Dominic explained it to me was, it was about the allocation, which is all square footage-driven. So I just want to make sure that we have some documentation from the City of Westminster saying that they've reviewed this and the water allocation will not be a problem.
Yes. And so, the engineers at work are able to do real calculations, and we might have shared some emails, but those emails probably didn't include the original attachments, which were the formal calculations. So, what we sent to the city wasn't simply an email saying, "Hey, we think the allocation will be this, and it'll be, you know, 4,000 gallons less per day than current." Attached were calculations from the engineers bearing that out, line item by line item. That's what the city planning staff and the health department reviewed, not just sort of, here's what we think the number will be. They reviewed the actual calculations from the engineers. That's what the email back from Andrew Gray at the city confirmed yesterday. And so, you know, interestingly enough, there were some follow-up questions, which were great questions, that they wanted to make sure that, you know, regardless of the ultimate square footage of the modernization, were we accounting for all programs that are happening in that building now, including community college usage, for instance? So we had some dialogue back and forth to clarify that, yes, everyone who's using the building now, those programs are accounted for day and evening. And so, interestingly enough, Miss Evigny, the kind of the last little bit of conversation we were having with the city staff wasn't to worry about the numbers, that they're good with the calculations, but it was sort of like, if projections on the calculations are a little bit lower per day, we'd like to revisit those numbers in two or three years with you, because perhaps there's some water allocation now available to be back in play in the bigger picture of the greater good. And of course, we assured them, obviously, we would, we'll take a look at that in due course.
Okay.
So, good shape with all that.
Two more questions. What about, excuse me, I apologize. What about the energy? Is there geothermal here? Is it electric? Is it gas? Is it all what it was? Or has that not yet been evaluated? And then, the part B of that question, are you guys going to show us the bathrooms, the restrooms tonight, locker rooms?
Well, Jeff can help you with the restroom layout, but as far as the energy usage, for our typical design development submission, we're required to evaluate four system types, one of which includes geothermal. And the savings just typically for this kind of project, they weren't there. So, we compared our four different system types, and we ultimately found that the system we're going with, which is a VRF system, is the most efficient for this particular project.
So what's the primary supply of energy?
Gas.
Gas.
Natural gas for heating.
Obviously, some electric, but the bulk is gas.
Right, the bulk is gas, because most of the shop areas are heating and ventilating only, so they aren't air-conditioned. Shops like the auto service shop are air-conditioned, and those will be direct expansion cooling, so, electric cooling, air-hailing units.
Okay, thanks.
Does that answer your question?
Yes. Do we want to talk the restrooms, or, not ready yet?
Yeah, we didn't bring that presentation tonight, but if you have any questions or want me to address it, I'm happy to.
Can you just, I don't know how many people know it, can you just give a general indication of the concept for the restrooms and lockers in this building? That covers it for tonight.
Yeah, so, I guess, let's start with the programs. So we have, within the programs, you have several different scenarios. We have some programs that have a standard male and female locker room. Then we have some programs that don't really require that level of square footage. So what we've done is, we've provided an open locker area where you can store your belongings, but then we've offered a bathroom, single-use bathroom, and then a changing room, a separate changing room with lockable doors, that students that do need to change can go in there and have privacy and do so.
One-on-one.
Correct, correct, exactly. And then, so that's kind of our, how we've handled the programs. And then, as far as the group bathrooms within the building, we also have staff toilets scattered throughout the building, too, I should mention, because that's always an important issue. But then, for group toilets in three locations within the building, we've got what we're calling, I guess, gender-neutral is kind of the latest terminology for this. And essentially, the way this will work is, if you envision a standard group bathroom, male and female next to each other, we're going to open that up to the corridor, and then, instead of having individual, or stalls, we're going to have individual compartments, floor to ceiling, so you'll have privacy to go into a compartment and use the restroom, and then come back out to a communal sink to wash.
And the exterior has no doors.
What's that again?
The exterior of the hallway has no doors.
To the hallway is open to the hallway. That's right, for supervision, so it, go ahead.
Jeff, if I might, just for clarification, in looking at the plans and asking the questions, envision singleton, lockable door, single bathrooms, all, you know, in a row, okay? With an open area to the hallway that people can see the wall of singleton bathrooms.
That's a great description, yes, thank you, absolutely.
So, a student can, if it's not occupied, they can go in, shut the door, lock the door.
Right.
Use the restroom.
That's correct.
Right.
And, this is something that may or may not be required or considered for East Middle also, correct? This is kind of the new wave?
Yes, yeah, I mean, it's the, it's where the laws are starting to trend, and really, every school is going to have to start to evaluate this going forward in some manner. There's different ways to approach it, but we think this is probably the best approach for students at this time. So I hope that answers your questions.
Yes. You guys like it?
Miss Henley's just looking at me.
You made the office figure when he left, right? Who decided it should be next to Cosmopolitan? Was that him? Oh, all right. Just curious.
And Mr. Hagan, both you and Mr. Eckles had said, you know, after we get done with all the phasing, there's going to be a little bit of space left over that's empty, which I'm really glad to hear, because, you know, with a four-year project, by the time we're done with it, there's already going to be...
Sure.
Probably things that are going to need to be changed.
Right, absolutely, that's how it works.
But does that have an impact, the fact that we're going to be ending with empty space in the plan, does that impact the state allocation?
Well, yeah, I'm going to, you want to talk to this Bill? Well, you maybe don't, but, we're not going to end up with a ton of extra space, but I'll let Bill kind of explain how that works.
So, really, the only empty space that we'll have at the end will be the old collision repair space, which was originally a storage building. That actually isn't factored into the square footage of the existing building on the state formula. So, leaving that vacant really won't impact the state formula. There are a few other spaces that we are structuring as alternates. We had some space where we are looking to do a school-wide maker space, a community classroom that the general public could use. We're going to do those as alternates. If the alternates not taking, they will be vacant space, but each one is about 800 square feet, so it's not a huge space. Obviously, if we decide to take the alternate, then they'll be developed as, you know, maker space and a classroom. But the one advantage we do have with this plan, where we take down the 1987 addition, is we really open up the site for future expansion if, 10 years from now, we wanted to add programs and build an addition. There's now some room on the site to actually expand in the future, whereas, you know, what we looked at, I guess, several months ago, with the 87 additions still there, we really were kind of out of room to expand, so.
Didn't, and, as long as we get all that money from the state, I don't need to understand it, fortunately. But, I know some of it's square feet, but in your financial dealings with the state, didn't they actually let you increase the number of students, which helped us get more money? Is that correct, or?
So the state formulas always starts with a number of students that the school's supposed to serve. So, in meeting with the folks from Merrill Department of Education, they have a standard formula that, a class size for career and tech programs, up 20 students in a program that they use as a generic calculation. The career and tech program we have actually has different class sizes, because we're trying to get, it's geared to how we run the program, and we want as many students as we feel can reasonably take the class. So a lot of our programs actually will house 22 students. So we were making, we had a meeting where we were making the case to MSDE folks, and they agreed with us that the 20 really is a generic thing, and, you know, a more realistic number would be our program enrollments, and that that's what we should be asking for. Ultimately, the IAC, the Interagency Commission on School Construction, will decide whether they agree with us or want to stick with the standard formula, but we do have the support of the Merrill Department of Education staff, so we feel confident that it'll go well, but again, fingers crossed, so we'll see.
What about, and I think I even talked to you about this before, does the concept of evening classes even help with any type of that funding? I mean, would that even help if we opened up the cosmetology at night? Because there is nothing around here for adults like that. Does that help with funding regarding that in any way?
So, using the spaces that we're using, bless you, using the spaces that we're already using for programs doesn't help. The state wouldn't give you any additional money for that. The only thing they will do is if you build some extra space for community use that isn't being used, wouldn't typically be used by the school, you know, an extra gym that's really just there for the rec council, that they'll give you some square footage on that, but for, they're already paying for the auto collision shop, so they're not going to pay again for it, just because the community college would use it at night, so their formula doesn't really account for that.
Okay.
When Bill says cross your fingers on the IAC, cross them tomorrow.
Oh, right.
We were hopeful that the IAC might address that question at their October meeting, and it didn't make the agenda. They meet tomorrow, and we're optimistic that they'll take up the question of the enrollment eligibility. And we know that we'll have the MSD, like Bill mentioned, we'll have the MSD staff, and we know we had some staff members from a couple of the representative agencies that comprise the IAC who were endorsing that as well. So, we know when they look at the staff members, some of those people are saying, yes, this is the right thing to do.
Okay.
All right, board members, any other questions? No? Okay, so this is pretty exciting. Taking a big step on a project that is just going to be a really great project for the school system that we're all behind.
We're all very excited. We do need to approve.
Do we do a motion?
Yes, we do. We did a motion, and we have a second. So now, I will call for the vote for the approval of the design development documents as submitted. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. I believe we're good until 8:30? Okay. Okay, and with that, so I need a motion for the approval of the 2021 school calendar. Moved by Mr. Kyler, second by Ms. Pataglia. All right, Dr. Lockard.
Okay. Board members, we need to approve a calendar tonight for next year. We started last summer asking for feedback from our community as it relates to various components of our school calendar, since there were some changes in what we were required to do previously. And so, we've gone over that feedback with you and posted it on our website. We had a calendar committee of parents, community, staff, get together and work and bring recommendations in September. They presented three different options, recommended option B, which was a one week before Labor Day start. At that time, you had asked me about where I was with that recommendation. At that time, I said to you, I was somewhere in the before, the week before Labor Day, somewhere. The board went ahead and modified their option C, which was a post-Labor Day start, and asked for continued community feedback, which we received much of. The, so tonight, as you're considering adopting a calendar for the 2021 school year, I bring to you some... to you some considerations. My recommendations for your consideration for the calendar, I base those on our instructional needs, the feedback that I've seen, and I want to bring your attention to that, and then I'll ask the board to entertain that, have some conversation, and we'll get to a recommendation for a calendar. My recommendation is in the board agenda packet, and Brenda has it on the screen there, thank you. For consideration of the board's modified calendar C, I'd recommend move the start date to Wednesday, September 2nd, as opposed to Tuesday, September 8th. I'm recommending in October, and you can follow along on the calendar behind that, recommend in October of modified calendar C, that instead of having two days off for students, I recommend that, that was previously October 15th and 16th, I recommend one professional development day on October 16th that closes school, that's a Friday. We will have school-based professional development. We also recognize that is the Maryland State Education Association State Conference, which we will continue to encourage folks who want to attend to be able to do that on that day. If those changes were to happen, I would also recommend that we move the middle-of-the-year professional development, that's sort of the change between semesters in the middle of the year. It was originally scheduled on a Wednesday in February, February 3rd. I would move that back to correspond with the days, and recommending we move the start date back to a Friday. So, that's in your calendar as well. That doesn't result in the gain or loss of any days, it just moves that professional development day. I'm recommending, again, based on feedback as part of my thinking, that we build in five snow days instead of four, because we'd lose a day there. So, with the changes that I outlined, and I did not change any other things in your modified C calendar, except for the ones I've listed there, those changes would move the last day of school from Friday, June 18th, to Tuesday, June 15th, again, with five snow days built in. So, in a perfect scenario, if we used no snow days in this calendar, the last day of school would be Tuesday, June 8th. Every time we use a snow day, we'd add on, taking us up through five days to the 15th. The other thing I'd ask the board to do, because I don't know that we want to continue this conversation every year in, to this degree, and also to give our community some sort of consistent approach of probably where we're going to be from year to year, because I know people like to make vacation plans, and sometimes they need to make them 18 months ahead of time. I want to respect that, and in any case, one of the things I'd recommend is some sort of signal of a consistent start. One of the recommendations I gave you was around Labor Day, and that is, if Labor Day were to fall on September 1st, 2nd, 3rd, or 4th, then I'd say to you, we could start after, Tuesday after Labor Day, and I've mapped all this out right there. If Labor Day falls on September 5th, 6th, or 7th, we'd start the Wednesday before. This puts us, for the most part, except one out of seven years, starting in September, a September school day start, except for the one year, it would be August 31st. Again, my recommendation when, is looking at our instructional calendar, trying to balance the beginning of the year start time and the end of the year start time, because we heard it from everybody. We don't want to start too late, some people said, I'm fine starting after Labor Day. We don't want to end too late in June, but we want all these other things in between, and, you know, it's a yin and yang, you put something in, you got to take something out. You take something out, you got to put something in. We have to meet the requirement of 180 student days, and of course, we wrestle with a lot of other days in our calendar. So, again, thinking about our instructional calendar, thinking about the feedback, thinking about trying to provide our community some consistency, those are the recommendations I bring, and I know we'll have lots of robust conversation around our school calendar.
I have a question concerning the spring break, because I think that was another area that we heard a lot of feedback concerning. So, in the proposed calendar, how are we addressing the spring break? Is it just those two or three days?
In your modified C calendar, and in my recommendation, it is a Friday, Monday, just as it was this year, and maybe even last year, just as it is this year, and maybe last year. You're right, Dr. Dorsey, there are a lot of folk, you know, look at our surveys, there's a lot of stuff that's pretty close, right? I saw a lot of feedback that said, we need a longer spring break, but we still want to get out, you know, the first week in June.
You want five snow days?
Right, or I don't want as many days in the middle of the year, make it, you know, start later and end earlier. So, we're not going to, I'm fully cognizant, we're not going to please everybody with whatever decision we make. I'm not necessarily trying to please everybody in what I'm recommending, I'm trying to think about what I believe in terms of our students and the instructional calendar, as well as finding some middle ground that addresses as many of the needs as possible.
Who wants to start?
My calendar. Start the 8th. I'm indifferent on Yom Kippur. I know that's passionate back and forth. I see other counties that at the least do it as an in-service day. I agree, the 15th ought to stay closed. I think the 15th of October, I'm sorry.
You mean the 16th?
16th.
Oh, the 16th is closed, the 15th are now school, I'm sorry. Yep, I couldn't remember which day you said. I think the 23rd should be at least a half a day. I think that is a nightmare for parents at work.
Are you talking?
With what they do with the kids. December 23rd, yeah, the day before Christmas Eve. Then you have.
Kenny, just to clarify, you're saying that instead of being closed on the 23rd, that we would be open and do a half a day?
Do a half a day at the least. I wouldn't, I mean, it could be a whole day. Like I say, that's, I think that's a nightmare for parents. Spring break, I like what it is. If you wanted to say you'd close Thursday, but that would be a makeup snow day if you have any days whatsoever, which odds are you would. And I'm not sure I did it right, but I think you'd still end the 15th or 16th. And I'm pretty passionate about, and I like the chart, I like the compromise with, so people know what we're doing, but I personally think it's black and white to say, let's start the day after Labor Day every year. And I understand some of the concerns. You look at the opinions, early on, it was 52-48, I think, to be after Labor Day. And devil's advocate, you could say, well, that's about even, or you could say, in a presidential election, that's half a landslide. I understand with AP classes and AP tests, but I'd like to think we have dynamic enough teachers that if they know almost a year ahead of time what they have to do to prepare kids for a test, they should be able to, a day or two should not kill it. So, that's kind of my opinion. And, yeah, I don't.
So, Mr. Kyler, I'm hearing that you're saying a post-Labor Day start, and then potentially jerry-rigging some of these days in between, okay?
And Yom Kippur, I can go with either way. That's going to make you finish a day later, if that's important enough to everybody here. Like I say, even, I look at Baltimore County, that has a much longer, larger population than we do, I think it's an in-service day this year. It was last year. It's either a school day or in-service day, so, which I don't know if that's an option, how they need to fit in, you know?
Right, I mean, I know, Dr. Lockard, you did a lot of research on those holidays, and we can say that Rosh Hashanah in this calendar year is not an issue, because it's on a weekend, right? But I know that you did a lot of additional research.
Well, I just basically looked around at what other counties were doing. You're correct, Mr. Kyler, Baltimore County for Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur are closed for students, they're both teacher workdays.
I think it's worth noting that, okay, Rosh Hashanah is not a day that we need to worry about in the 2021 calendar, but when we get to 21-22, it is, right? And I think that there's potentially a standing thought on the table of, if we were looking at those particular holidays, that we might say we'd be open on Rosh Hashanah in those years, yes, open on Rosh Hashanah, but closed on Yom Kippur. Is that one of the things that?
Yes. For me, it just all depends upon when Labor Day is. I mean, if Labor Day is earlier in September, then we could have Yom Kippur and Rosh Hashanah in the calendar, because then, you know, there's more, a little more flexibility. But when it's as late as it's going to be next year, and in two more years, I mean, it just makes things more difficult. Plus, we're adding in an election, and, I mean, those are strengths, I mean, that just makes things so much harder to do. So, I think if, A, if we could track the attendance on it, see what happens, you know, I mean, if we see that we had a high absence rate, then we look back at it.
I'll say, I know other systems have wrestled with this question, and, you know, technically, as a school system, we can't, technically can't close for religious purposes. At some point, we recognize if we have a high enough impact to our instructional day based on absences, that we would have to then make some decisions about whether we hold school or not. So, to your point, Ms. Pataglia, if the board does make a decision to close on one of the, to open, be open on one of the days that we currently are closed for, for the Jewish holidays, I do think at minimum, we need to monitor attendance and make some significant accommodations for students and staff who celebrate those holidays.
Absolutely. So, Ms. Herbert, you had your.
Yeah, the thing I wanted to say with Ms. Pataglia's comment is that we are trying to set up a calendar that we keep to every year. So, if, I don't think we can say, well, one year we're going to be all for Yom Kippur, and the next year we're not, and we need to be consistent. So, we either are or we aren't, and not look at it from a calendar standpoint every year, and that's, that defeats the whole purpose of what we're doing tonight. So, I understand what you're saying, but we need, you have to make a statement.
And we can debate the merits of a bunch of different days and potential half-days within this calendar, but if we can give our thoughts to, okay, are we talking pre or post-Labor Day at this point, if we can keep our comments to that, and then we can talk about moving days around within that, once we get consensus on that particular issue.
Basic, we just follow what state law requires.
Well, there's, we have discretion on whether we want, where we want to start.
That, but I mean like holiday wise.
Right, we do have to follow state-mandated holidays.
Yeah, so whatever the state says, that's what we do regarding holidays.
So, I mean, obviously, this is an issue that we've all been struggling with and having significant conversations on. My thoughts around the pre versus post are that, you know, we did the initial survey, we had 10,000 responses, and it was 52% post, 48% pre. And of the 48% pre, there were, it was split 50-50, some of them saying, well, start post-Labor Day if at all possible, but when it's late, then start early. So, the way I interpret that is, the community overwhelmingly told us that they wanted to start post-Labor Day if at all possible, right? And I think that if we were able to, while I appreciate, and I think that these are all good discussions that we're having, that these are worth having, but I don't want to be spending all of this time having these same conversations every year, right? Because this isn't really value-add for student achievement, right? I'd like to be able to make a decision one way or the other, and put the issue to bed, and give the calendar committee direction going forward of this is what we're going to be doing. And I think if we could keep it consistent for families, like, you don't necessarily want families to go out and say, okay, well, next year, what day is Labor Day starting on, and, okay, the school system has a formula, so does that mean that we're going to be a pre or we're going to be a post? And I think if we can say, if we do post, and this is going to be our toughest year, right? So, if we can figure out a way to do it this year, then it's only going to get easier after this point.
And respectfully, Ms. Vigney, as it relates to the email, email feedback that we got, okay, we don't need to take a break. As it relates to the email feedback that we received after the modified calendar C went out, I would say that there was a larger majority of people who responded to that, that recommended, that suggested a pre-Labor Day start. Now, that doesn't include all the other feedback that I'm sure you've gotten, and people coming up to you, and individual emails, et cetera.
Right.
Just wanted to say that for the record, though.
Right. Well, there's, and even, but a lot of those, and that's why I'm saying, it's, I'm glad that we had that feedback. I think that we want to hear it, it's led to robust discussions of what do we really want to do, and discussions of, you know, days like doing a half-day on the 23rd, and doing the professional development day is a little bit different in October, I think those are all good discussions that are leading to good decisions, like, so I'm glad that we're having these. But at the same time, a lot of that feedback that was saying, start pre-Labor Day, they were saying, but I also want a longer spring break, right? So, a lot of that feedback was contradicting itself, right? So, it's like, okay, well, if you take more days at spring break, then you're not ending any earlier, you're not gaining anything, right? So, and I did hear, I actually heard from a lot of people, miscellaneously, when the recommendation went out, saying to start pre, that's when I got a flood of emails saying, wait a minute, I thought the C-modified said post, what's going on? And so, that's where I think a lot of people looked at the C-modified and said, okay, yeah, we're good. And then when we put out a pre, they're like, hold the phone. So, I've heard a flood of feedback in the last couple of days of, no, 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 we want it post, so.
Well, can we do either verbal or legit vote of just pre or post? And see where we're at?
And see where everybody goes.
Like you say, if it's, if the majority says pre or post, I don't care which, and that's what we do.
Okay. So, I don't think we take a vote on that, but we can.
And never talk on the other days, because.
It's not a technical vote, but let's say what we're in favor of, a consensus, so.
One moment, if you do it that way, then is it really considering this modified version that Dr. Lockard?
Well, if you decide on post-Labor Day, then that just.
You're sort of compromising.
Then you just add three days to what I've presented to you, or go back to your modified C, but that would, that would just put, that would have your end date be Friday, June 18th, with five days still built in.
That's too late.
I mean, it's three days later, and we're talking about a Tuesday versus a Friday. We've all talked about how.
And if we do something on the 23rd, it'll be a day early.
Yeah, but again, if you're in a school, if you're ending June 18th, that's just two weeks outside of the 4th of July. And so, by the time you end school, it's the 4th of July, and everybody in the school knows, once the 4th of July comes, it's like your summer's downhill from there. So, again, I don't think that would give a good summer break. I mean, I think June 18th is certainly late. I liked the modified recommendation that Dr. Lockard has here, with the possibility of ending on the 15th. And then if we don't use all, if we don't use any of the snow days, again, how that backs up to June 8th. But I heard what you were saying earlier, we're not going to reach 100% consensus on this from all, from every person involved, anyway. But again, I do know that when you're out of school, when you're living it, June 18th is just way late for ending.
I guess from a, I don't see a whole lot of difference between ending in a Tuesday of a given week versus the Friday of a given week, or if we jerry-rig this around a little bit, it might still end up being Wednesday or Thursday of that week.
Yeah, the 15th, I mean, we've ended on Tuesdays before, and again, when you're in that middle of the month. And again, when you're by, when you're in that middle of the month, that Tuesday is a lot better, I would think, than going that whole week until the 18th. Of course, that's, that's my opinion, and, you know, having lived it and been a part of the schools, I just know what those last few weeks of school are like.
Jackson, you had some comments?
Yeah, I just think the post-Labor Day is too late for APs. It's just early spring APs. You can't, I don't think you can have spring APs with that late of an ending. I've had multiple AP teachers come up to me and say, I can't teach a spring AP course with those few days. Those few extra days count a lot for being able to get their tests out and get kids ready for those tests, especially some of those early ones that are, May 5th is more like the earliest days for those AP tests, and that's just, that cuts a lot of time out of what should be a 90-day course for an AP test to be taken.
You know, I've been contacted the last couple of days on this. I don't have a vote in the thing. And they don't realize it, but I know the Maryland State Fair is really concerned about when we start and stop. And the only business people have been contacting me, really concerned about pre-Labor Day and the effects it has on their businesses. So just let you know that.
Did the State Fair come out with their exact start date yet?
No, they're waiting, well, they haven't yet. They did ask, you know, are you going to start before Labor Day or after Labor Day? They are concerned, very concerned about what the school system here is going to do, as well as others in the state, so.
And, again, I respect what both of you are saying, and what you said, Dr. Dorsey, we're not going to all grace, so what it is, is what it is. But if we do something with the December 23rd, we're talking two days. I'll be honest, my kids, I'd never counted days before an AP test. I told them they better be ready and go take it. I don't understand how two days can make somebody do worse on a test, when they know about it at the beginning of the year. But I respect what you're saying. I mean, you're doing it right now. I'm old, I'm not, you know?
Ms. Herbert?
My philosophy always was, when teaching, you start the day after Labor Day, you finish up in, on Memorial Day, and you add a half hour every day. And I think that would be the perfect schedule, but that's not it. But I did contact the State Fair. Carroll County and Frederick County have the largest amount of students that participate in the State Fair, and I can understand that. But if I'm going to go show my pig, and it's going to bring me $10,000, they're going to be there selling their pig, or their goat, or whatever. Now, I know, an example of this, how our lives changed with, me personally, when Jessica was young, we used to go seven out of 11 days to the State Fair. But once they started making the, the calendar change, it killed a lot of things that went on at the State Fair. The State Fair is not everything, but is, it is a very important part of the agricultural community in Carroll County.
I absolutely agree there, Ms. Herbert. It is a very big part, and we have a lot of kids that participate, and that is the, that's the one thing I keep looking at, too.
All right, we're saying a lot. Do we have a number?
Let's, let's do this. We, we can debate the merits of individual days after, so notwithstanding the fact that we're going to potentially move days around, let me just call for an idea of what people are thinking. So those that are thinking post, please raise your hands. And those that are thinking three, pre, please raise your hands. Okay. So we have a majority, but not consensus for a post-Labor Day start. Given that, let's talk about what are some of the potential changes that we would make within the days, to see what that would mean for an end date, and see if that changes anyone's mind about where they would vote. Does that make sense to folks? Okay.
Donna, we need to take, make sure that December 23rd is a half a day, or we'll add that, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Then also, I think we need to give them April 1st a half a day.
Hold on one sec.
The Thursday, isn't that, that's, that how, that's, it's second and the fifth, correct?
Right.
I would like to give them a half a day on April 1st.
So, Ms. Herbert, if I might interject just for a second, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Sure, no problem.
If you remember at the September meeting, I made some recommendations.
I know, I know exactly what you're going to say.
To the calendar, I recommended a limit of six.
How many do we have?
Two-hour-and-45-minute dismissals.
There are one, two, three, four, am I reading this right? Five at the moment?
I believe there are five in this existing Modified Calendar.
So if we do the 23rd, then that's the max, right?
Right.
Okay.
What about October 15th, Marsha? Close? I mean, open?
Yeah, I think it's already open.
According to the information that I have, that should be an open day, but those people that are going to the CCEA convention should be able to leave right after school, when the, when the students leave, so that there's no contention and trying to get out. I do believe there's, there's traffic problems, and those CCA people and anyone else attending that should.
Just to be clear, Mr. Kyler, were you referencing Friday the 16th?
Friday the 16th.
Oh, okay.
It is closed.
Closed for professional development and MSEA.
And that's, and.
But we're open on the Thursday, the 15th.
Right.
Right, so I was working off of C Modified.
Okay.
Maybe we should.
Yeah, I think that's in your, in your packet, C Modified, the.
Where if we added back in, because this was ending on the 18th with four snow days.
Right.
Right? So if we added back in the 15th, right, that's one day.
Right.
We add back in a half-day on the 23rd, that's two days.
Right.
So we could make that a five-snow day and ending on Thursday.
Thursday the 17th?
Thursday the 17th.
With five snow days built in.
And February 3rd, you were just moved to where it has to be.
Yeah, I'll, if the board is deciding on a post-Labor Day start, I'm going to move that back to balance the quarters a little bit more, so they're a little more closer to 45 APs.
Correct.
We usually pad the second and third quarters just a little bit, because those are typically snow times. So if we lose a day, you know, we still get close to, lose a couple of days, you can still get close to 45 days for the quarter. So, but we could, we could, that doesn't impact your start or your stop time, we can move that commensurate.
Yeah, exactly. And then, Yom Kippur, it's a matter, do you want to be done a day earlier, or be open that day?
We're not supposed to, to close for religious holidays unless it's a state mandate.
I'm confused. Donna, are you, did you say you were looking at the option C Modified, or the one that's option C Modified with the superintendent?
I had been starting with C Modified, because that was a post-Labor Day start, and I thought it was easier to mock that one up than to, than to work off of the recommendation, which was a pre.
Right.
So I had started with C Modified, which was a September 8th start. And if we said October 15th, that's currently marked as closed, that that would be open, with the caveat that Ms. Herbert was saying about being able to leave immediately after that day. And then if we added the 20, December 23rd back in as a half-day, that that would give us five snow days and a Thursday, the 17th, end.
Right, so in a, with that scenario, with those changes that you just stated, Ms. Sevigny, the earliest with no snow days would be Friday, June 11th, correct?
With no snow days, that would.
Used.
If no snow days were used, that would be Thursday, the 10th, yes.
Thursday, the 10th, yes.
And it still gives you a little bit of cushion, that if we ended up using six, you could go to the Friday without having to roll into the following week.
Right, and I'd be, if we used beyond six snow days, I'd be request, I'd ask, be asking us to request a waiver from the state at that point, because it doesn't do any good to come back the week of the 21st.
Yep, I agree.
I agree. And so doing it this way, so versus the, the pre-Labor Day start, we were gaining three days, like, from, from the AP test perspective, this way, we're getting two of those back. We're getting two out of those three back, but still starting post-Labor Day.
Yep.
Is one of them, you're counting, getting back, December 23rd?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Right, I mean, we get that back to count toward the end of the year, but my guess is there, we're going to want to monitor attendance, too, because, you know, we could be impacted there.
I agree.
And again, this is under the header of, there is no perfect calendar that's going to make everyone happy.
That's right.
Absolutely.
And again, this is the toughest year. If we're, we're kind of being consistent with what the community said that they wanted, this is the toughest year. If we can make it work this year, then it gets easier from this point forward.
It does. This is the latest that it can be.
Yeah.
So right now, just let me bring us back in. I'm hearing that the consensus of the board is a post-Labor Day start of September 8th, one day for professional development on October 16th, and MSEA Day. Nothing changes in November. We'll shift the early dismissal and the end of the quarter a little bit, but that doesn't add or take away any days. December 23rd becomes a two-hour-and-45-minute early dismissal, that counts as a full day of school. We will shift the middle-of-the-year professional development day between semesters to be commensurate with the, the quarter ending, based on a, pushing it back a few days. So it would probably go back to the middle of the week, February 3rd, is my guess, but I'll look at that and count it up. But nothing changes with March, nothing changes with April, except the end of the quarter. And the last day with five snow days still built in is June 17th, with June 10th being the earliest we could get out without any snow days being used. Is that what the board members are hearing and understanding, what we've talked about?
Yeah.
And that you have the five snow days built in?
Yes.
And athletic dates don't change, they're mandated by the state.
Yeah, what is it, the 12th or 15th of August, something like that?
15th of August.
We'd probably have a game before school starts, right? Two games? Yeah.
And graduation will be adjusted to fit the calendar.
Right, we actually looked into this as well. We have a little bit of flexibility with McDaniel. We looked at the first two weeks of, of June. Frankly, for maybe another conversation, I think we should be, Jackson, sorry, you're, this is, are you senior this year?
I'll be senior next year.
Next year, although this will affect you, I couldn't remember if you're a junior, senior. I'd recommend that we start to look at, starting after Memorial Day, we start graduations, because we've met the hour requirement for our students, and they're typically finished with their exams. There's no sense in them continuing on for two more weeks. I'm not trying to get points with our students, but I feel like, I feel like having graduation the week of June the 7th could potentially mean that the end of, if we didn't use any snow days, students might be out of school, and we're still doing graduations after that.
Good point.
So, we can, we can, we can look at that for the future calendar year, but that's for another conversation. So, that's what we have so far.
All right, so go ahead and reiterate one more time. I just want to make sure we do have it.
Okay, one more time. Starting school on September 8th. I'm only looking at the things that are changing. I mean, I.
Okay.
Everything's, then the rest of September stays the same. October, we would not have two PD days, we'd have one on October 16th. We'd still have Election Day, November 3rd. In 2020, we'd adjust the end of the first quarter. The Thanksgiving break stays as it is. In December, the 23rd would be a early dismissal day. We would adjust in January, the, I'm sorry, in early February, we'd move the end of the quarter, and the professional development day between semesters there, that doesn't add or take away a day, it just moves it. March stays the same. April stays the same, with the exception of a shift to where the end of the quarter would be, and the early dismissal. And then the last day of school would be, those things I just mentioned, would be June 17th, with five days built in. The earliest we could get out without any snow days being used would be Thursday, June 10th.
And we're not going to close for Yom Kippur?
That's a conversation that the board need to have.
I mean, we're not, I mean, I don't know.
I think, I mean, we can certainly have that discussion now. We did talk about the, the research that Dr. Lockard had done. I think if we're comfortable that we're ending on the Thursday of the 17th, that that's a discussion that we could have in future years. If we think that we gain anything by ending on Monday earlier, we can have that discussion.
It's just something that we heard very strong in the community on, is.
If we close it.
I mean, not to be open.
I mean, if we open it, then we're only one day different than Dr. Lockard's.
That helps me with the AP classes and AP tests a lot. That would, I think that would help with the AP.
Would you rather finish the day, or would you rather have that day? A lot of the emails said that they'd just as soon be.
Right. I'm sorry, Jackson, are you saying be open that day would be helpful for the AP test?
Right, because that does shift the quarter back another day, and gives that, just an extra day for 80 minutes more of instructional time can be huge for an AP test. It can be a review day.
It's not a state mandated holiday to be closed, so, like I said, we need to just follow what the state mandates are for now. That's the only thing I'm thinking.
Any other thoughts on that particular?
I disagree. We put it in there for a reason. It was, it was noted, you know, years past, that it was very important for us to keep that in there. But that's my own opinion.
I recall, I mean, I've been here throughout the last 40 years, listening to you all talk about this, and my recollection is that the Jewish holidays were put in under Dr. Ecker, because there had been a lot of trouble in scheduling tests, practices, and all of that. And even though the, there had been a, a request made that tests and reviews for tests and things like that not occur on those days, they were. So if you're going to eliminate those days as holidays, school holidays, you might want to address the issue of not scheduling things on those days, because it just, it wasn't working, and it caused a big controversy every year.
That is what students said. I did have a couple of students say to me, open school, if people wanted us a religious day off, they should get an excused absence. And their words were, that don't mean throw the test at me the next day, you know?
That was, that was a problem, because if you, if you do celebrate those holidays, you're not studying that day. And you, you can't, there were. And you, you can't, there were certain problems, but that's why Dr. Ecker did this. So you've got to consider that when you're doing it. So if you're going to eliminate it, you've got to have some kind of guidance given to your, to the staff.
To that point, I mentioned that 45 minutes ago, that if that is the consideration, we would need to make those kinds of accommodations, you know, as well as monitor the attendance, because again...
That's an issue.
Right, right.
I agree.
Right, I agree with that.
So, and you had done some research on what the attendance differentials were on some of those days before the changes had been made, is that correct? I thought I remembered hearing you say something about that.
I did not, no. All I, all I looked at was what other school systems are doing currently. There may have been some things done back in 2003 or '04, I don't know when Dr. Ecker made that.
I'd have to look at our files, I don't remember. But they did keep track of it. I remember the biggest controversy actually was opening on, was it Good Friday, when we had too many snow days?
Oh, yeah.
And that didn't work. And the decision was made never to do that again.
One of the Western counties did Memorial Day this year, or last year.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, they had to.
I mean, at least with this year, we only have to, there's only one Jewish holiday falling during the school, school week, so that'd be at least easier for this year to work around with tests and reviews and stuff you're not having to deal with. Two, two days real close to each other where you can't do anything particularly important.
Right, right. So if we were to do that, then what I'm hearing is we would need to have a plan for, okay, students would certainly have excused absences. We would need to plan accordingly for tests, but lay out some guidelines of exactly how we would do tests, quizzes, things like that.
Yeah, I would, if that's what the board decides, my recommendation would be that we would begin working on guidelines for schools, not, not just the day of, but as Ms. Eisenberg mentioned, the day after, including things like field trips or, you know, special programs.
Band practices, and you also have to think about the teachers, too.
Right, absolutely.
Right. And we would certainly want to track attendance differentials and make sure that if, if it was an issue, that we would be able to have the data to say, we need to rectify this for the following year. Okay. I have to admit, I was leaning, I was heavily leaning towards leave it as a day off, but after Jackson's comments...
I think along with his comment, and I think it looks so much better to say you're ending on Wednesday. It still won't make Dr. Dorsey happy, but she'll be a little more happy.
Again, it was something that was very strongly stated in the community, and, I mean, that's the thing we've been discussing, is what the community's been saying. So that was one thing that was stated over and over several times.
21, it's the middle of the week.
Okay, so given a post-start, then let me see a show of hands of who would say be open, Yom Kippur. And those who'd say closed?
I'm traditional.
Okay. So we don't have consensus, but we have majority.
Yeah, I just know that. The only reason I, because I lived through that, and there was a reason we did that, so.
Yeah.
And that's it.
And I, I think sometimes, you know, again, we're looking at numbers for FFA students and students who might be involved in the state fair. Well, if our Jewish population is small, we still need to acknowledge that we do have a Jewish population and, you know, be respectful of their holidays. So again, that's the reason why I said, yeah, if we could, I would like to see it as a day, you know, acknowledging them. But you're right, I mean, some of the public comment certainly, you know, was just the opposite, but it just goes back to what we've been saying all along. We're not going to be pleasing 100% of the people, so.
As I have to say, I initially started off heavily leaning towards be closed for Yom Kippur, leave that as a holiday, but after the student perspective, that, that helps alleviate one of the problems that we have from starting post-Labor Day.
Like I said, that means something we can look at revisiting a couple of years down the road, but based on what, how late Labor Day is this year, I think it's just, we're, we are adjusting a lot.
Okay, so then what I'm hearing is that we would be open on September 28th, and that would have us as an end date of Wednesday, the 16th. With five snow days.
The ninth if it's no snow.
Right.
The ninth if no snow days. I'm hearing lots of heavy sighs.
We're going to have to move forward.
Right, okay, well... Okay, so we know, so with a start date of the 8th, the modifications that we talked about, an end date of Wednesday, the 16th, and five snow days built in. If that would be, okay, any more comments or thoughts before I would make a motion?
Now, are we rescinding the first motion or doing amendment to the motion?
No, we need to, we needed to make a motion to have the discussion. Now we can make a motion to amend that approval.
Amend the motion, yep.
Okay. Who would like to make the motion? I guess I'll make the motion, as stated, a start date of September 8th, an end date of June 16th, and five snow days built into the calendar, with the changes of open on September 28th, open on October 15th, and a half a day on December 23rd.
Do you want one of us to make a...
I, I am making that motion.
You'll make a motion, I second.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Kyler. Any other discussion on that particular motion? Okay. Was that a yes?
Now, I do have a question that we are making this, that we are going to start each year after Labor Day then, or is this just this, or is this just this calendar?
Board members, the law says you have to look at this annually.
Okay.
Right, I'm required to bring you a calendar for approval each year. I was just trying to get some continuity or consistency in the approach.
Unless we change, if we bring it, starts after Labor Day, we'll save about a half hour.
I think what, what this is saying, though, is that our preference as a board majority is to start post-Labor Day, and so the, since we're going to be keeping the calendar committee intact, that that is the direction that we're providing to them in order to come up with their recommendations for the calendar in future years.
But what you're saying, if we have another election and this board changes, it could change.
That's correct.
Because it has to happen every year.
If, if circumstances are such that it just doesn't make sense, that, that calendar committee could always come back with something different, but that's the, as of now, that's the direction that we're providing to the calendar committee going forward.
Right.
Which is consistent with what we heard from the community.
Right.
Okay, so I had a second on the motion. We made those clarifications, and we will be making very specific clarifications and guidelines for what we will and will not do for the Yom Kippur holiday.
Yeah.
Without stipulation. I call for the vote, all those in favor of the motion. All those opposed. Okay, that passes with a vote of four to one, with Dr. Dorsey dissenting and student representative agreeing. Okay, so that motion passes. So now I call for, is there any other discussion before we call for the vote on the full calendar? Ms. Eisenberg, do I, is that a sufficient vote, or do I, that is the sufficient vote? Okay. Okay.
So, board members, I will take the results of, of your vote this evening and approval of calendar dates, reformat. I will be making some, so all the things that we talked about will be included. I will be making some adjustments to the end of the semester dates, so that's going to impact, you know, the November end of the semester, that's an early dismissal. It also impacts the late January, early February end of semester, where there's a PD day that's going to shift around in there somewhere. I need to sit down with staff and take a look at that. It does not impact any of the other decisions that you've made in terms of the discussion and the motion for the vote. So please know, it'll just, it'll just be a couple of days difference based on starting after Labor Day. All right?
And Dr. Lockard, I want to thank you for doing all of the research, and I really appreciate, I really do appreciate the process that was followed. I think doing the surveys, doing the calendar committee and all of those recommendations, I think it really helped us get to this decision. I think it was a robust process. So while it's a tough decision, and like we said multiple times, we're never going to make everybody happy, I think it was a very robust process, and I think we now have some guidance for the calendar committee moving forward, so. All right. Thank you, board members. We have one more item under action items. Do I have a motion for the approval of the 2020 legislative statements? Moved by Ms. Bataglia. Seconded by Dr. Dorsey. Dr. Lockard?
Board members, the legislative position statements are returning for approval from the September meeting when we first brought them to you. The draft statements have been available for public comment. We also held recently our annual meeting with the Carroll delegation, had conversation around the legislative statements as well as many other important topics, and they indicate, they did indicate they will schedule our one local bill request placement of the JROTC instructors on their upcoming local bill hearing. So there are no changes to the proposed position statements that were discussed, and I am returning them for your approval.
Board members, any comments? I think this is all consistent with what we had heard previously. I'm definitely happy to see the, the piece reflecting the inflationary increases, because I think that's really an important one, and I know that we discussed that as a group at the, the delegation meeting. Okay. No other comments or questions? All right, then a call for the vote. All those in favor? It passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, now, under unfinished or new business, I did just want to say very quickly about my, the meeting that I had with Mayor Joe Dominic, that was primarily in connection with the discussion about the East Middle site location, trying to understand exactly how the water allocations work and whether, you know, Friendship Valley possibility was off the table. And I think that we now have a, a pretty good understanding from the city of what we can and cannot do, and I think that, and I, it was helpful, I think, in our discussions with Career and Tech as well, just to make sure that there won't be any surprises late in the game. So what I would recommend, board members, is that we bring back the East Middle discussion to the December board meeting to have that robust discussion and potentially make the call of declaring the site. Does anybody have any issues with that? Okay, so Dr. Lockard, we'll have that on the agenda for the December meeting, with the hopes that we can have a vote at the end of that meeting. Okay, great. Board members, any other unfinished or new business? Ms. Bataglia?
So, tradition in my family is always Thanksgiving, we say what we're thankful for. So I have given every board member just a little Thanksgiving reminder, so I'd like to ask everyone to hold up their little, their little Thanksgiving reminder, and just three things that they're thankful for. We'll start, Mr. Weaver. I include Mr. Weaver this time.
Okay. Well, I'm first thankful for my family, is number one. I'm very blessed with a great family. I'm thankful for this county. What we have in this county is unbelievable. We are in a bubble, and I said that earlier this afternoon. The collaboration, the way we're working together, the boards, everything in the county is, is working well. I mean, we have one of the safest counties in the state, we have one of the best school systems in the state, we're at the top of many things, and there, and being Veterans Day this week, I am thankful for our country and the people who have served, people who served and didn't make it, and I just, I'm really thankful the school system put on a lot of the programs they did. I attended many of them, and they were fantastic, and a lot of the veterans were there, very appreciative of the programs that were put on for them, so, thank you.
That was all very well said for being put on the spot, Commissioner Weaver.
He did more than three, too. I'm thankful, it didn't take away from me, did it? I'm thankful for my family and their health, and truly, I'm thankful for this board, this superintendent, this staff. Obviously, we take things seriously, and we don't always agree, but we agree to disagree, I think, and a lot of people in this world can't do that today. And third, because I'll stop at three, I'm thankful that in about two minutes, this meeting will be over.
I'm thankful for my family, thankful for my, the community that I'm able to serve, and I'm extremely thankful for the opportunity that I have to do what I do now, with being on the board, seeing the kids interact in the schools, helping the teachers out. I have a lot to be thankful for, but it's the three.
Great. I'm thankful for my family first and foremost. Secondly, this outstanding school community, and with that is our great students, our incredible staff, and of course, our, our very supportive parents and community. And then I'm thankful to be working here in Carroll County, you know, my hometown.
I'm thankful for my very loving and wonderful family and all the support that they give me. I am thankful for their health. Having a child born with significant issues and having a transplant young in life, it kind of puts everything in perspective every day. I am thankful for the health of my family, and I am thankful for this community and the fabulous education that my kids are getting as part of this school system, so I'm thankful for all the support, the superintendent, staff, this board, because we do work very well together, and I'm blessed. Thank you.
First of all, of course, I'm thankful for my family. Second of all, I am very thankful for the people of Carroll County to give me the opportunity to be on this board. And third, I am thankful to be around this wonderful group within the CCPS family. It has just been wonderful, great experiences, and our educators, all of our employees, how hard they work and how they serve the community for the betterment of our kids. It's a fantastic place to live.
Knowing you want to get out soon, I should go on and on and on and on.
Love it.
But I still say that I certainly am thankful for my family, including my Carroll County Public School family, because when I was away for a while, I certainly missed the connections. So it's good to be back, and it's good to include CCPS as part of my... So, it's good to be back, and it's good to include CCPS as part of my family. So, family, friends, and my health and strength.
I'm thankful for my family first and foremost, for my parents for always pushing me, my wonderful grandfather. Thankful for the students of Carroll County, who I'm just absolutely blessed that they put me in this position to be able to represent their opinion to you guys, and I'm just thankful for this county. Wouldn't want to be anywhere else.
Awesome. Thank you so much, everyone. All right, and with that, future meetings at 2:00 PM on Wednesday, December 4th, 2019. We have a follow-up work session on the students attending schools out of attendance area here in the boardroom, 125 North Court Street. At 4:00 PM on Wednesday, December 4th, there is the FY21 Operating Budget Work Session immediately following the other. At 5:00 PM on Wednesday, December 11th, 2019, we have the board meeting with citizen participation here in the boardroom at 125 North Court Street. And on 1:00 PM on Thursday, December 12th, 2019, we have the Board of Education and the Board of County Commissioners joint meeting in this boardroom, 125 North Court Street. So, it's on our turf this time, and next time, we'll be back in your spot. So, with that, I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving, and we'll see you soon.
Wait, forgot.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Send it.
Moved by Ms. Herbert?
Second.
Second by Dr. Dorsey. All those in favor? That passes unanimously. Good night, everyone.